Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay and good evening. The Wayhams Zoning Board of Appeals, Town Wayham. Tonight's meeting, April 11, 2018. It's 6:35 PM and we are at room 320 of the multi-service center, 48 Marion Road. I'll call the meeting to order. Make a roll call. My far-right member, Wilma Angerman. Our clerk, Juma Kabachi. Far-left alternate member, Jake Morrison. Attorney Jen Kendrick. Kalbakti Senior. Myself, Chairman Nazir Al-Khlasih. We have here present also independent consultant attorney Paul Haverty.
Haverty.
Haverty, thank you. And building commissioner is here. But he'll be coming up. Town engineer. We had a little incident there. The attorney for the 40B project. Unfortunately, I think we had, he had a heart attack downstairs. So apparently, a lot of you here for that case tonight, right? For the three.
Woodland, sir.
Yeah, Woodland Cove. 3102 Cranberry Highway. So we're just gonna continue this hearing, so we'll get you going. So it's not gonna happen tonight. All right? So. It's not, the guy just had a heart attack.
He had a heart attack on his way in.
Downstairs.
We're not, we're gonna continue it.
Yeah, also present is town planner Ken Buckland, for the record. So can I get a motion to continue the hearing? For two, petition 2-18.
So moved.
Yeah. Just your name, for the record.
I'm sorry, my name is David Hurd. Is there a time constraint on having this meeting?
Yeah.
And can we just postpone it without losing our opportunity to speak?
It will be continued for the following, not this one's there.
Can we continue the 30-day or whatever the time is?
No, no. We have time.
It's not fair.
No.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just for the record, the timeframe for the board to conduct its public hearing on this application is 180 days.
From the day of opening.
When the public hearing was opened. We have plenty of time under that. We can talk with the applicant if additional time is necessary as we move towards the end.
Correct.
The board does need to vote to continue this to a date certain. So do you want to discuss what the next date would be?
We will continue it. Just let me open the date. What's the next, following Wednesday or the one after? April 25?
We're at April.
Just if you guys keep it down, so we could get this going.
25th.
Yeah, might just, we gotta get a date.
April 25th.
25th.
All right, so that'll be, we have a motion to continue to April 25. You will not be notified, so you have, you just have to know it's April 25. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by call, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Thank you.
You didn't get your envelope? Oh, yeah.
That's crazy.
It is.
I hope he doesn't die.
Gotta talk up.
He look bad?
Yeah. I can't have a pen. I lost everything.
Early evening, huh? Your wife will be surprised.
Thank you.
Hopefully not disappointed.
David, how's he doing? Dave? They took him? Is he any better? Where are they?
Which one of the guys?
So April?
April 25th.
April 25th.
Which one of the guys?
Peter, the lawyer.
The older, older of the three that were sitting? Not the lawyer?
Yeah.
All right. So that would sit this.
He was just reading, reading a letter.
Do you have minutes? All right, we have some business to do for the minutes for February 28. Did somebody view it?
I gave it a cursory read. It's fairly long. I didn't read it word for word, but it looks, generally speaking, it looks like it represents what went on that evening.
Wilma, did you look at the minutes?
I glanced over, but I didn't get a chance to read them all.
All right. Minutes, anybody looked at them?
They look fine to me.
I did not have time to.
All right, why don't we continue the minutes until next meeting? Because I didn't.
Give us a chance to read them.
For the record, Charles Rowley, town engineer, just came in. So we'll do the minutes next time. All right, Jasmine? Wow, this is crazy. I'm sweating myself.
Brown, yep, a little bit.
Yeah. What we're gonna go with?
There's no 10 line.
I know. How are we gonna start this? All right, let's do. Ramos, really, they want a continuance? For continuing?
Yes, they do.
All right, let's do 46. Continue public hearing, 46-17. They're requesting it continuous. So they've been continuing this for quite some time, right, Ken?
Yeah, they have.
All right, let's push this. Till.
It's frozen solid.
Jeez.
That's okay. Until, I think we should, we should do this until May 9.
Sit on it.
Okay.
Because 46-17, do I have a motion to continue?
Yeah, so moved.
Till May 9.
May 9.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by call, until May 9. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain. Okay. All right, we start with the public hearing. 3-18 Leonard Cabelas for Union Ave. Wanna come forward, please?
Please be sure you're using the mic.
Yes. How are you?
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
This is mine as well.
So.
Oh, this is Jan Cola. Says 100 dollars.
Wrong plans, sir?
Wrong plans.
Should we keep them? We're gonna need them later?
You will need them later.
All right. Make it easy. We'll just start passing them all back.
Just put them together.
Yep, put them on the bottom of the pile.
Want to put this back in?
Yes, and just.
Or over here until later?
Over there until.
Bring them back.
Keep them back.
Which one have we got? 18 or 7? 7 or 3?
3, I guess. That's the first one. We haven't got anything yet.
We do them both or one at a time?
Two different.
The first one, for Union Ave.
I'll read it into the record. It hasn't been opened yet, has it?
Yeah.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on April 11, 2018, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571. To consider, petition number 3-18 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622, Article 8, Section 823.1, and Article 13, Section 1332 of the Wayham zoning bylaws to Leonard Cabelas, 197, Onset Avenue, PO Box 1405, Onset, Mass. 02558, seeking to change the use of three business suites and turn them into residential units and turn the mixed-use building into a residential apartment located at 4 Union Avenue, Wayham, Mass. That's on Assessors Map 1, Lot 212, in the Onset Village 1 zoning district.
I'll just name an address for the record.
Leonard Cabelas, residence is 55 Collier Road in Situate, Mass.
Jamie Souza, 6 Baranzalane in Buzzards Bay, Mass.
All right, wanna state your case, so we go further?
Yes, thank you very much for the opportunity to make this request. The Union Villa Building has been a significant monument in Onset for a number of years. In 1992, we purchased the property and have been working, really, the top four floors are all residential and have been very successful keeping them rented. The lower level, which is, I'd say is a garden style, if you will, is a half a level down. There's really no space to create handicap access. We've been trying to keep those rented as commercial spaces without any success. Big issue, we just, our prime tenant's been in it for a number of years. The Onset Bay Association had recently left because of handicap accessibility. And we felt that it's in our best interest and frankly, the community's best interest to modify that, turn it into residential, so that the whole building would be a residential use. There is a nice terrace in the front, provides some outdoor space. And we've included a layout showing three residential units and how they would work. Those of you who may recall, we had a similar problem only on the opposite end, on, at the, what's now the Cohog Republic Building. And the upstairs, again, didn't have any handicap access. And we needed to, we modified that to residential. It's been occupied since day one. We've got some great tenants and it's been very successful. And we thought we should really make that change here at the Union Villa Building.
All right, very good. So what's, what's, what's in the stores now, the offices?
One had been the Onset Bay Association space and is now vacant. Another is a contractor's storage space. And third is a plumbing subcontractor's storage space.
Let me get the right file, so we know what the building inspector wrote or.
Yeah, we've got some misfiling here in the folder, so. This is 4 Union Avenue that we're talking about?
4 Union Avenue, yes.
So these are all correct.
Scan that letter from the inspector.
These are, no, these are letters from neighbors.
Okay.
So.
David, do you remember this? Did you wrote the letter?
Yep, so basically, what's happening here is he's, he's gonna convert the commercial area of this building into new residential space.
Yeah.
So under that change of use, he has to comply with the bylaw.
This is.
Which is?
So to have 11 residential units, he would need 15,000 square feet of land. He's got 8,029 now currently, so he's a little short. That's basically the reason why he would need a variance under this. He's not entitled to a special permit, because he's not a single or two-family residential structure. And that's, our bylaw states that you need 5,000 square feet for the first unit and then 1,000 square feet for each additional unit after that. He's already non-conforming now, and under the bylaw, he would technically be making it more non-conforming because of land area.
Also, I notice here, what's the size of the units you're gonna make them? They're gonna be what size?
I've included a plan showing the layouts of them. So Unit 1 is gonna be 630 square feet. Unit 2, 450 square feet. And Unit 3, 675 square feet.
That's another, I guess, variance you need, because you need 650.
Correct.
Without, that's just living, excluded from, like, I guess bathrooms, right, David? You need 650 excluded bathroom, just living space and hallways and stuff. And you need another variance for.
I don't believe our bylaw states that you can exclude bathrooms. It just says that each, under 823.1, it says each residential unit should be at least 650 square feet in size.
Okay, so that's a good thing, one thing. All right.
Do you mind if I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, just so that I can get this in my, I'm pretty sure I'm getting where this is. If, if I was at Mark Anthony's Restaurant, everybody knows where that is, and I walked across the street heading towards the old Union Street School, up Union. And this would be on my left-hand side as I go up, it would be the, actually, the second building in from.
That's correct. Right on the corner is Stevie's Peer View.
Yep, okay.
Next building is, is this, it's included in the package.
Yeah, I see the picture, but I just.
Yeah.
I'm asking the question, because a lot of people don't get the benefit of seeing what we're seeing.
Sure.
It may save extra commentary from the community. So this is the second, so, okay. And downstairs, once upon a time, one of those retail places was a real estate office?
Yes.
It's been different things over the years.
Years and years ago, Souza.
We've probably had 50 tenants in there.
50?
Yeah.
In, in, what period of time, would you guess?
It's 92.
Yeah, okay.
We haven't been able to keep any, anything viable. When they get successful, they end up having to leave because of the handicap access. All right.
Jen, Jake, you wanna say something? Jen?
So the need, so we have, we have an issue now with, currently, she, square foot requirement. There's no, there's no change in, everything is remaining the same, solely by virtue of the fact that you're now gonna have residential units, you have an increase in the square footage that's required.
There's a change of use, yes.
Solely by that. There's no, there's no increase in the size of the building.
No.
And your primary motivation here is that, due to the fact that it's, it's not possible to reconfigure these units in such a, maybe compliant for businesses?
It's not, it's, there's not adequate space in the front, with the side, with space between the sidewalk and the, and the entrances. There's not adequate space to get a handicap access in there.
In places of public accommodation, you have to be.
Correct, correct.
Carl. Anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor or against this one? Yes, wanna come forward, please? Take a mic, state your name.
Hi, my name is Jeff Gorman. I'm from Onset. My wife and I had come to Onset about 20 years ago, and Mr. Cabelas had just.
Can't hear the gentleman.
Can't hear.
Wanna sit down, speak to the mic?
Speaking to the mic.
Is your mic on? Testing?
Yes.
So my wife and I had moved to Onset about 20 years ago, and Mr. Cabelas had just improved our neighborhood over on Point Independence. Did a great job. Since then, in the past 20 years, I've watched them transform the village from empty units, dilapidated buildings, into very nice-looking buildings with almost 100% year-round occupancy. I think it would be a shame to pull the plug on them now. That's it.
Thank you. Second? Yes, sir. Wanna come forward?
David Hurd, precinct 3. And I've seen other work that Mr. Cabelas has done. It's been very good in Buzzards Bay in particular. I'm wondering about resident parking. Nobody has discussed that this evening. I'd like to have that brought up. Is there sufficient parking for anyone who's moving in?
My, my, my personal opinion, the answer, that's how it is regarding parking. I understand, but it's always been like this, so I'll let Mr. Cabelas answer this.
Certainly.
It's not fair to Mr. Cabelas for parking for, because the whole area has no parking, there's parking down the tennis courts, down the school. People are gonna have to manage. But I'll have Mr. Cabelas answer. Go ahead.
We're fortunate, this is one of the few properties that actually has a good-sized parking lot. Parking is available in the rear. We've always been able to accommodate our, our commercial and residential units. In theory, the, the commercial units require parking now. Weekends, when they are occupied, the OBA had visitors all the time, and people would, would park in the back. So I believe that the, that the parking requirement is actually gonna be a little bit less than what we, what we see right now with coming and going for parking requirements.
That answer your question? I know it's not much, but the whole area, you know how it is. And he does have more parking than anyone else there, so it's not really fair to, because I've seen other projects granted variance or a special permit with no parking at all there, so. So next one? Yes, Dominic?
Good evening, Dominic Camerano, Onset.
Speak to the mic, Dominic.
Dominic Camerano, Onset. This is just something that, you know, I'm not sure, Mr. Cabelas and them, they do great jobs. This isn't really against them. But Onset Village is a quaint village, and it's a nice village. Now, as far as the Union Ave property, you know, that's who we're speaking about now, then he's gonna go to 197. To put residential and take away the commercial ground level in Onset Village, I think, would be a shame. Because people walk around there, you know, they go in the summer, you know, it's something that Onset Village is, is noted for, you know, the village itself. And I think that having residential units right there on the ground floor, you're gonna have the doors open, people are gonna be sitting in there. And I just don't think that, you know, it's, it's the right thing for the village. I mean, if, if you grant him, I mean, it's good for business, I understand, because I have a building in Onset Center too. And renting for a commercial can be tough, and you know, you gotta work with the tenants, and it's a pain in the neck. Residential's a lot easier to rent. But if everyone changed all the commercial units in Onset Center to residential, what would we have? You know? So if you allow him to do it, everyone else is gonna wanna do it. But what happens to Onset Village if you take away what the village is? Thank you. And it's not, nothing personal. They do great work, and they're good people, but.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Jamie, are these the ones where the break is, the first floor? These the units where it used to be the office?
Yes.
Anyone else in the audience? Wanna come forward, please?
How you doing? Bill Bayshon from Tyler Ave. I think I would much rather see residential use than a vacant building. I think the last thing in the world we need is more vacant space. Sounds like a good way to economically make it work.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have, I have one that was emailed in that I'll read into the record.
Yep.
It's dated April 11. Subject, of course, is 4 Union Avenue. It was an email to the Town of Wayham and interested parties. And it reads, "My name is James M. Cooley. I am a homeowner and a business owner in the Town of Wayham, particularly in the Village of Onset, for over 30 years. Anything that Len Cabelas's," he murdered your name, has touched, has been for the benefit of this town. You're in business to make money, but Mr. Cabelas is in business to make the village better. Anything he has ever done to any of his properties has increased the value of the Town of Wayham immensely. We are talking about an ice cream stand, something that draws thousands of people in the area, right around the ban shell, and Jamie Souza is instrumental in keeping that area clean, making sure everything is always looking well in the park. And to deny them their application would be a travesty, because they deserve to expand their business. It is their building, and they are tremendous business people, and I face their building from across the street. I am at 4 Union Avenue, and you know that the property is just kept beautiful all the time directly because of her. This town was awful 30 years ago, when this family bought some property, started renovating property, increased residential apartments. The Onset Village became a better place because of Len and his family. Len Cabelas, single-handedly and at his expense, some years ago, had a bus driving people into Onset Village that increased his business, but increased everybody else's business in the Village of Onset. I respectfully request that you approve their application and the application for the residential space that we need so badly in the Village of Onset. Respectfully, James Michael Cooley."
We can try to help you, but he's, this is totally off. He's saying he's at 4 Union. We're talking about 4 Union, so how's he across from?
I think he's commenting on both of them, is what it sounds like to me.
Yeah, he's, I don't know if he knows what he's commenting on.
Well, I could still comment, whatever.
We read it in.
Okay. Anyone, anything else? All right. I don't have a problem with it myself, I speak for myself. I have a problem with the size of it. I really do not like to go less than 650 square feet, personally. I usually review these files. I was away for a while, I just came back last night. I didn't go through the files, so I'm sorry. I usually get familiar with it, I didn't. Like I said, I have no problem with it. We're not gonna close it tonight. I'll get everyone's opinion. Hopefully, we continue next time, so we'll have more chance. I'll have more chance personally to review it. And we'll just give you a kind of idea what everybody looks like. Wilma, what do you think about it? Are you okay with the change of use and number of units?
No, I'm not, I don't think, I, the number of units going in is, you made the statement, apartments are too small if they're going to be residential apartments. They would have been good if they were using it to rent during the summer, to people coming down and just.
All right, but if they, let's say they, they're requesting three units, right? If they say, let's say they make them two units, a little bigger, are you okay with that? So gentlemen and lady, know where they're going?
Well, I have, I have questions about the parking, that's all. And I still have questions, even though with everybody trying to explain.
All right, Jimmy?
I have no objection. I, I have no objections to the application.
The way it is, or three units?
As is.
As is. Jake? All right, Jen?
I don't have any, I don't have any objections.
The way it's presented?
No.
You find with the three units?
I, I see, I note the concern with the.
Size?
With the size. I, I don't know what I, what I quite think about that at the moment.
Okay.
But in terms of a change in use, I don't, I don't personally have a problem with it. I, I don't, on the parking issue, I presume that there's, you know, we're talking about one-bedroom apartments, right?
Yes.
You've had, you've had previously, I suppose, sufficient parking for businesses.
Correct.
I think that, right, that you're going from a use that has higher volume.
You have, you're going from a use that has a higher volume of traffic, needed parking, to, to one that has a, a lower.
I certainly don't think it's, it's, that the parking requirements is getting worse. I think it's, it's the same or a little bit better.
A little bit better.
Yeah.
The only thing I was gonna ask you, Mr. Aquina, I was, this, this Article 13, Section 30, 1332, has been rewritten, right, I think? So, I was just trying to finagle around in it, but I, I don't know whether or not I personally am sure that Article 13, 1332 would apply to just a straight change in use as opposed to an actual, some type of reconstruction or physical alteration, but.
In, in, almost every case, a change of use has to be treated as if it were a new construction. A change of use has to comply to new provisions. I do have a couple of things I would like to add in, though, right now for the record. I misspoke on excluding bathrooms and closets. It does say exclusive of bathrooms and closets in the bylaw.
That's what I thought.
So, he needs a 650.
Without.
Top of that. Now, on the parking end, it's actually an improvement. For one-bedroom units, our bylaw requires one and a half parking spaces per unit. On the retail side, it requires three parking spaces per unit. So, he's actually improving the parking requirement on that end of it.
All right, but let me ask you something, in the use, a change in the use, you're asking for a variance. Wouldn't that be, like, because he's an existing non-conforming, expansion of the existing non-conforming use? He's an existing non-conforming, right?
Yes, but, but it's not a single or two-family residential structure. If, if you're gonna change the use, he's, he's applying for a permit for a new use, essentially. So, that's how it's treated. In order to go from, from one use to another, he has to comply with all the provisions of the bylaw in order to change that use. We don't have, we don't have any protections right now that allow a special permit for a change of use.
Yeah, but let's say these units are just units, they're not called commercial or nothing, and he, he's asking to make them an apartment.
But it's, it's over four units, so it has to be treated like commercial.
Like commercial?
Has to be treated under the code as commercial. Mass General Law, Chapter 48, protects one- or two-family residential structures.
All right. Tom?
I'm in agreement with the gentleman stated about if we stop making it all apartments, we're gonna have no business. The parking issue is, they have parking in the back. I wouldn't, if I'm gonna vote for this, I won't go for no more than two units with the size.
Okay. All right. So, I guess you know what you had, and so we'll continue this. Unless, you want to say something before we continue?
I guess the only item that I'd like to bring up is, I agree that if everyone turned their, their commercial space into residential, then there'd be no commercial, be no real downtown, no reason to come to downtown, so to speak, or less of a reason. I do think that there's also a requirement for a balance, and, and the amount of residential that you have in a, in a village actually helps the, the commercial be more viable. So, the more people that are in the village, the more people that are walking around, the more people there are to walk to a business. So, I'm not suggesting that this is the balance. I'm not sure where that balance is, but generally, if you have good commercial space, it's rented. And if you don't, and if you have poor commercial space, it's difficult to rent, or it doesn't get rented, and that's what we've seen. So, that's why we're here today.
I just want to add also, this area is small, for, Jen, I don't know if you know the area very well. This area is very small, it cannot afford a lot of businesses too. It's not like you're in the highway. It's very hard to rent, I had a building before there, and it's very hard to get a tenant for a commercial. So, I don't have a problem with it, it's the sizes, it's the size of the apartment, so I just want to get to familiar with it more, and we'll continue it for next time.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to add something on that one, on 4 Union? Here are none, so let's make a motion to continue.
So, moved?
Have a second?
Second.
So, it's gonna be moved to April 25th, 2018. Okay, so next one, April 25th.
Get things right in the back in the right file. Cross-contamination.
Jake, you have anything?
Oh, sir.
Ken? Ken, what's up? Gentlemen, for Woodland? Sir?
Jim O'Brien.
Jim? Did you know what happened?
I did, I just wanted to see if it was a continuance or if you ever wanted to do it.
Yeah, we, we did, I'm sorry. How did he make an out? You don't know what happened? Yeah, we did continue it till, oh, for April 25th, for two Wednesdays from now.
April 25th?
Yes. All right, sorry, sorry about that. Tell him, we hope he feels better. Thank you.
Mr.?
Thank you, Ken.
Did we continue with the Union Street?
No, no. Union, we did.
Union Street, yes, we continued the last one.
Yes, the 25th. That was the.
He was talking to somebody.
No, no, but what's the date? I didn't catch the.
April 25th.
The 25th?
Yes. All right, next one. Next one, sorry. 7-18, Leonard Cabelas, 197 Onset Ave.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on April 11th, 2018, at 6:30 PM in Room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 7-18 for variance/special permit from the requirements of Article 6, Section 622, Article 13, Section 1332 of the Wayham zoning bylaws, to Leonard Cabelas, 55 Collier Road, Situate, Mass. 02066, seeking to construct an additional, an addition to a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming mixed-use structure located at 197 Onset Ave, Onset Ave. That's on assessors map 1, Lot 1001, in the Onset Village 1 zoning district.
All right. Again, name for the record and state your case.
Leonard Cabelas, 55 Collier Road in Situate.
Jamie Souza, 6 Bronze Lane, Buzzards Bay.
Yep. All right, Len.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Want to pass these, please? Jimmy? All right, go ahead, Len.
So, as you recall, about a year ago, we had come in asking for a, a variance in order to construct a two-story addition to, to this facility. We were seeking relief from the zoning bylaws for side and rear setbacks, primarily associated with the topography of the site and the historic nature of the, of the building and the interesting shape of the building. We feel we need to expand the, the structure towards the rear, rear or side, depending on how you're looking at it. And at, at last year's hearing, there was concern about, I don't want to simplify it, but there were some concerns raised about the views and, and the two-story structure, and concerns that it, that it, concerns residential on the, on the second floor and also blocking a view corridor. Although we feel that we are not subject to the decree and, and we're not subject to a view corridor, we certainly paid attention to what was said. We've come back modifying the, the plan to go with a single-story structure, and the documents in, in, in front of you show the modifications and how I believe that that view can be, can be maintained. I've actually, apologize, I'm not having enough copies here, but we've taken.
I have, we have this.
This, this was a little different.
Oh, yeah.
It, it shows the architectural rendition from the rear and just what the size of that, that addition will be.
Okay.
That kind of like Photoshop?
It's all right, I got, I got. Is anybody else?
Did they get one?
All right, you want to keep going to the mic, Len?
Yes, so by, the way the building is, is, is structured and the way the, the grade actually dips down as it goes towards the, the back of the, of the building, we're able to tuck the, the building into the, the grade, if you will, there'd be a slight retaining wall in the back, and by keeping the, the roof pitch very low, we're able to maintain that, that view that you would see from really the intersection of Union Ave and, and Union Street. Obviously, the, the character of the, of the buildings is greatly different than, than what you saw a year ago with a two-story structure, and, and we felt that the modifications were significant enough that, that it may change the board's mind and, and consider the application a little bit differently.
All right, thank you. Just gonna start, if we can make quick comments as possible for them, because we have a lot of hearings. Wilma? I know last time you said no.
And I, and I say no again.
So, you don't like it? Any other comments structurally, visions, looks?
It's, first of all, it's too close to the property line.
Okay.
And, I mean, and I, I mean, it doesn't even, it doesn't even, what, what you'd say give us a chance to even tweet a little bit for them, because it's only, it's about five feet from the property line. And I mean, that's, that's a little bit too close, from my way of thinking.
All right, Jimmy?
I have no objection.
Jake? Jen?
No, no.
Tom?
Is this still gonna be an apartment?
No, no, it was never gonna be an apartment. The first floor was never gonna be an apartment. So, it's, the first floor will be an expansion of commercial space.
There you go.
And, and there's no second floor. I think, Mr. Baptiste, you were concerned last year that the, the second floor was gonna be an expansion, actually, you thought there might be another apartment there. In my mind, it was gonna be an expansion of one of the units, but it's gone now.
Okay.
So, that's gonna be more, to add on to the, it's gonna add on to the ice cream shop?
To the ice cream parlor, correct. So, that's more commercial spaces for you, Dominic. All right, any audience, who's, who want to speak for, in favor of this? In favor? None? Okay, against? Against? Come forward.
I would just like to express that.
Just to the mic, your name.
You know, I think this bar never should have.
Excuse me, just, just put your name first for the record, we have to.
Thomas E., 3 Buller Road, Little Harbor. I, I just never thought this bar should have been allowed to build a plexiglass bar with people drinking right up to the edge of the sidewalk where kids are walking back from Mark Anthony's eating ice cream cones. That bar, that plexiglass with bar tables is right adjacent to the sidewalk. So, I'm sorry, if, you know, to retract, but that, that is the past, and I just caution you about approving something which is more expansive, you know, detracting what could be the character of Onset. That's all. It never should have been allowed in the first place.
Wait, wait, there's a, excuse me, sir. Were you saying there's a?
Yes.
On this, on this location?
At this location, the bar and a plexiglass window goes right up to the sidewalk. And I wish I was here two or three years ago, I would have voiced opposition to having a bar with people drinking on bar stools right up to the sidewalk. There should have been a setback, and, and that's beside the point, that's past history. I'm sorry, but, you know, I, I'd like to get more involved in the community, and I wish I was three years ago when that got approved. And I just caution that we're expanding more, that, that bar never should have been allowed right up to a sidewalk. So, so I, I just caution that expanding more, taking away the landscape and the view, and just building more and more of like a, you know, a bar mentality in Onset. Okay?
Thank you.
That's it.
Is that a bar?
Someone else? Yes, man, come forward.
We have one to read in, too.
Good evening. Nancy Miller from Onset Protective League. I would like to voice an opinion of a large number of people against any expansion on the building. First of all, I agree, he is not under the decree, but there is a deed, you should have copies from Winnadine about her view of the water and how nothing can be put there that will block that. That was, I want to say, 1885, and then in 1938, it went to the Supreme Court and was struck down when they tried to build more in front of her view as well. But the bottom line is, is I will reflect what the gentleman just said. It's a very difficult thing when you have families in a family environment in the village of Onset, and then you're dealing with the drunks that need to get out of the bar and stroll around town wherever they go. It's a problem, and I think they've done a semi-decent job in keeping it under control, but I think the more that we expand or we allow it to expand, the greater the problem becomes. We've had everything offered from carousels to, you know, games on the beach that have been turned down because of the family atmosphere in Onset, and it's vital to the village that that remains. So, I'd like you to know that we do oppose the expansion of this building.
Just to answer your question quickly, last time, that deed restriction was never proven, so.
It was 1938 Supreme Court.
I, I know all about it.
Irrespective of that, may I? I, I don't think it's our role to, to get involved in that type of.
It's like a civil matter.
That's come before the zoning probably 30 or 40 times, so it has to be in your records somewhere, seriously. But it was from the 1930s that the Supreme Court reviewed the case and.
I understand, but let me make it simple for you. There was never a letter from a lawyer or a lawyer here saying it is true. It was, it was, it was the records, it was a story, it was never, nothing solid in front of us, so we cannot base it on that. Unless there's something, a lawyer comes here, say, "I certify, and that's how it is, it's right here." We, it's just hearsay and stories, we can't take this. On the, on the matter of the drunks, that's what people go to bars for, most of people. So, I don't know what to say.
And families go to Onset for the beach.
I think, sir, I'm, I'm sorry. I mean, I've been to bars and get drunk, I don't know what to tell you. Eliminate the whole alcohol then. I mean, what, what can we say? I mean, there's, there's bars everywhere. If somebody gets drunk, it's not the gentleman's problem.
Oh, but it is.
It is, if he gets sued, but it's a bar. I don't know what to say.
You say that there are laws in this town that protect the people that live here.
Right, but if somebody. Right, but if somebody, I understand, but if somebody gets drunk and make scene on the road, that's not, you didn't make him, he didn't make him, it's no one's, it's that person's problem. You can't control people. Those people does crime and everything, we know it's wrong, but that's, we cannot penalize a gentleman who owns a restaurant. For instance, okay, can you penalize Pub 99 because somebody get drunk?
That hold the bar owner and bartender responsible?
Right, it becomes a civil matter.
Is out of their inebriated? Yeah.
We don't control this. Not me, not us. That becomes a police matter and, so it's going out of hand.
Ma'am, what he's trying to explain to you is your argument is in front of the wrong board.
I agree.
That's all. That's, that's what he's trying to say.
However, the argument about the protected view and the fact that it is bad for the village to expand that restaurant is before the right board.
That, you're right. That, you're right, but not the other thing.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, anyone else want to speak against it? Come forward, please.
Darius?
Name again, Bill.
Phil Beishan from Tyler Ave. They're trying to expand an ice cream store that does wonders for the village. I, I don't see a problem with it. It makes complete sense to me. I mean, a lot of little kids love it.
It's not an ice cream store.
Tom? Do you want to say something?
I want to vote, I want to make a condition that Cohog Republic doesn't expand. And that's not, they're just trying to move the ice cream store back to give Cohog more room. So that's going to be my vote.
Is there a definitive plan?
There is a definitive plan.
With respect to...
In the, there, there are no, first, I have to say this, Cohog Republic has, I think, has been great for the village. They run a very tight ship. Those of you who've, who've gone there, I think, have seen that it's not, it's not a place where drunk people are allowed to, to participate. And that's not what we want, that's not what they, what the owners want, that's certainly not what we want. And, and if anyone saw that, they should let the owners know or let me know, because it's, it's a violation of a number of, for a number of reasons at least. Cohog Republic has no plans to expand right now. As you know, they're, they are very limited on the space that's inside. Quite honestly, I, I hope that at some point their, their business is such that they want to open on a year-round basis. If they do open on a, a year-round basis, then it does provide us an option on being able to do something. Right now, I wanted to have the additional space. Jamie's office right, right now is internal, and the plan is to move her into that space.
Can we move that to four, Union?
No, it's not handicap access. The, and for a number of reasons. The main reason that we wouldn't move it is because she also manages the, the ice cream parlor, and those of you who've gone there have seen that she's in the, in the back, going from the desk to the, to the counter. Because there's not enough business during the day, even during the summer, to be able to, to, to stand in front of that window and just, or, or pay someone just to, to do that on a regular basis. So we're looking to, to move that, that office at this point. And, but I certainly wouldn't, Mr. Baptiste, I wouldn't want a, a vote that says I couldn't do something on the inside. If the, if the restaurant were to expand, it would be on the inside, it would not be on the outside, and it's an interior space. So I, and, and I think the only reason that they would want to do that is so that they can open on a year-round basis. We're not looking to enclose the outside canopy area or anything like that. So I hope you'll consider that.
All right, any, anyone else want to add anything on that?
I got, I got another handwritten one that's been submitted, asked to be read into the record.
Okay.
And there's a couple of pitches attached. Chairman Nazia Kalasi, I'm disappointed that I can't make the public hearing for April 11, 2018, petition number 7-18 for variance at 197 Onset Avenue, Onset. As I stated before, I'm opposed to this request or for any changes to our bluffs. I have taken pictures of my view, now which will be taken away. I live at 6 Union Ave, Onset. The decree of 1916 protects this view. I have no objection to petition 3-18 for Union Ave. My only concern is parking. The lot is over congested now. Thank you for your time, Winnie Dean.
All right, anyone else want to add something? Again, I would like to continue this, if it's okay, Lynn, unless you want to answer today.
Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Just ask a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
I know if I'm looking at the plan correctly, it looks like the proposed building addition is only three inches from the lot line.
Right.
Couple of questions with respect to that. First of all, how would you do the excavation for the foundation without encroachment on town property? The second question is, is there any roof overhang and where does that runoff go? And the third thing is, you've got a limit of work, setting up a temporary barrier on town property. Have a proposed easement, or is the town granted you an easement for temporary workspace and potential for issues dealing with that?
So we would, we'd certainly understand that any work that would happen in there, we'd either have to come to the town and, and get a easement, a construction easement to occur during, during the work. If not, then we'd need to move the, the property line in and it would be less, or the, the construction line in, and it would be less intensive than, than what we have right now.
What's the roof overhang on that back piece?
I see a gutter along that side, so, so we pick up the water and then, and divert it towards the rear of the property.
The edge of the roof is flush with the wall?
The edge of the roof would be, would be flush with the face of the property line.
The property line?
Excuse me, the, the edge of the gutter would be flush with the edge of the property line.
How do you propose to maintain that without encroaching on town property?
I think in order to, to move forward, the variance is first, and I certainly understand that I'd need to go and, and request, if it's an easement, a access easement, then we would, would request that.
You're going to need permission from Selectmen.
Understood.
Yeah. Well, I think what Charlie's saying about the, you are, you asking to have the building like four inches from the property line, right? Quarter of four?
Yes.
And the gutter's like six inches, so you're going to be overhanging over there.
We may have to move the, the wall in a few more inches in order to do that.
And the rake and the trim, right, Charlie, that's...
Well, it looks like it's a shed roof in the back, so there must be some trim involved with it and a shingle overlap. But the more important thing, I think, is the fact that you can't walk around that, wash the windows, clean the sidewall, trim the grass, whatever is there, without encroaching on town property. There's no setback.
If, I mean, that's, that's the condition up and down Onset Avenue. You know, it's, it's part of, many properties in the, in the area are right on the, right on the property line. As an architect, I do work a lot with zero lot line properties, so there are ways to construct up to, up to a property line. I felt that three inches, maybe it's four, maybe it's five, maybe it's six, that we need to ultimately provide, but there's ways to do it. And it, it can add to the cost, but I think it's viable.
I would think that some, some sort of easement, permanent easement, which would allow you access to that side of the building would be necessary, and also a temporary work easement, because you're going to have to dig a foundation hole, which you will never be able to keep vertical.
Yes.
And keep away from encroaching into town property.
We would certainly look for a construction easement.
And you'd need a permanent easement, in my view. You want to occupy the area around it so you could even maintain your building.
And if that's a condition, then, then we could certainly live with it if, if the board felt that, that...
Right, however, is, is it possible? I don't have a problem with the project, but is it possible you go to Selectmen and get that easement prior? And, I mean, there's no way you're going to be able to construct it without that easement. Apparently, once you set a fort there, if you don't have an easement, they could stop you right away. So there's no sense of granting this variance.
But they wouldn't need the easement without the variance.
Right, yeah, I mean, I, I felt that this frankly is the right board to start with.
It is, one more time, please, I'm getting confused. So it is the right board, however, I think, I think Charlie's right, I think you need the easement, because you're going to have a problem. Apparently, there's some oppositions, and every time you do something, you're going to, you know, it's going to be stopped.
Yeah, we...
Mr. Chairman, could you make it conditional on the, on the receipt of an easement? In other words, do your, your work here with respect to the variance that he's seeking, make it conditional upon the receipt?
You can, I mean, it's either way, so he's going to need both of them.
If I, if I may, I, I'm not sure of this, but it is a public bluff. People come and go all the time. I guess I just wonder if, if we needed to wash a window and if...
I'm, I'm not worried about washing the window, I'm worried about the construction part.
Oh, I...
I mean, washing the window, I don't think the town minds if you walk and wash the window, you know? But we could do it this, this way, if you wish, whichever, Tom, what do you want to say? You want to say something?
I don't have something to say.
Yeah, I want to...
Can still be a statement in favor?
Of course, come forward, please.
I don't have something to say.
Hi, my name is John Cornish. I own the property at 5 East Boulevard, the Stonebridge Bistro or Bar and Grill and the Stonebridge Marina. And I just, after listening to this, I just wanted to tell the board or tell, point out to the board that over the years, as I have improved my property, I've run into the same arguments. And what seems to be most important after being here for some 28 years in Onset is healthy, viable, commercial businesses make Onset a healthy, fun, attractive, more valuable place. And anyone that's willing to spend their money to improve an existing building in Onset, I think, should get the most consideration that you guys can give. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Somebody in the back, what's, yes, go forward, Alan, please. Selectmen Alan Slaven. Congratulations on your election, too.
I'm not speaking about the project itself, it's just a couple of things came up that you mentioned. When you get involved with the decree and everything else, it's quite complicated over the years. It's also old, we're not sure what holds and what doesn't. Town of Wareham does not own the land. Town of Wareham is a trustee. When we went ahead and did the project with Buzzes Bay Coalition, we had to get David War from the War family, who are the original owners of the property, to sign off and get the state to allow it in order for the, that bathhouse to be done leased. We couldn't lease it on our own. So for these people to sit there and get an easement is not something really simple to do, just so you understand. We don't have the ability to do that, because we do not own the land. We are strictly the trustee. So when you discuss this, you have to understand that. Thank you.
Yeah, but as a trustee, you could grant them an easement for construction. No?
Because we don't own the land. That's what happened with the bathhouse. We had to go and actually get David War to sit there and make a statement and go to, we actually had to go to the House and the Senate to get a ruling in order to do it.
All right. Anyone else? Should we look into this more, or what do you want to do?
I think, I think...
Any suggestion?
Further, further study or further discussion. I'd like to, I'd like to continue rather than make a decision that we may feel different about with additional information. So I'd like to give both the applicant and the public a chance to come back at our next meeting.
Okay, do you have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Jen, to continue April 25th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Guys, don't confuse 4 Union Street with this.
I think already passed back 4 Union Street.
Don't, that's... It's all right. All right, Jimmy?
Thank you.
You want to guys take it outside, please?
Thank you.
Clean that up, Ben.
Just, just outside, please.
I'm going to take it out. This goes with the plans that were erroneously passed. Okay.
Is this okay?
There's a bunch of stuff in here, so...
But this is okay?
One, two, three, four, to the left, one, two, to the right, one left for me, just enough. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on April 11, 2018, at 6:30 PM in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. To consider, petition number 4-18 for a variance, special permit and site plan review from requirements of Wareham zoning bylaws to Gian Cola Properties, Minnit LLC, care of Leonard Bello, 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., seeking a major modification to the ZBA decision 28-14, requesting to add a new building similar to the existing building on the undeveloped portion of this lot, as well as requesting a special permit in order to clear 50,000 square feet located at 72 Minnit Avenue, Wareham, Mass., assessors map 44, lot 1,000 in the MR30 zoning district.
All right, just for this record, for conflict of interest matter, I'm going to have to accuse myself because I have some business with Attorney Bello. So Jim would chair the, take my seat.
Okay.
So it's all yours.
Gee, thanks.
Knock yourself out. Can I sit here and check it out?
Yes, you can. Go ahead, Mr. Bello, tell us what you're up to.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. You should have a package in front of you that I submitted, nine copies. Look at my letter of intent. It will give you a full explanation of, of what the history of this property is and what we're looking to do. I'll read that letter of intent into the record and then be glad to answer any questions. When Gian Cola Properties, Minnit LLC, whose principal is Michael Gian Cola, who's sitting beside me, when they purchased 72 Minnit Avenue in May of 2014, it housed a pre-existing commercial building, which according to the assessors' records, was initially constructed in 1950. The lot 1,000 consists of 4.58 acres, almost 200,000 square feet, with a little over 100, little over 1,000 square feet of frontage on Minnit Ave. The existing building makes use of about half of that lot, with the remaining half of the lot being woodland. While the lot is located in an MR30 zoning district, previous Zoning Board decisions regarding this property make it clear that this lot's non-residential use has been continuous since 1973. As a matter of fact, in the 1973 Zoning Board decision, the board pointed out that this lot was in what was then a commercial D zoning district. Upon purchasing the property in 2014, Mr. Gian Cola appeared before the Zoning Board of Appeals for a site plan review and to obtain a special permit for a change of commercial use to upgrade both the interior and exterior of the existing building. Again, according to the assessors' records, the existing building was constructed in 1950. That would put it before zoning. The requested relief was granted and a copy of the Zoning Board's full decision is attached to my packet as Exhibit E. At that time, the Zoning Board in its decision specified certain business uses which were to be allowable, recognizing that the building was intended to house commercial tenants. In quotes, "The owner or his..." In quotes, "The owner or his tenant may conduct a business identified under such uses as educational, non-exempt, oceanographic engineering research offices, laboratory research office, service establishments not involving manufacturing on the premises, wholesale business, retail sale of marine equipment and supplies, but not including fish products or food, manufacturing of products on the premises, the major portion of which are sold on premises from produce to consumer, light manufacturing or storage facilities." In its grant, the board found that the proposed renovations increased the building's utility and function needed to attract new business, would provide additional tax revenues, increase employment opportunities, and also noted that, in essence, the board was simply allowing a pre-existing, non-conforming, non-residential use to continue. The 2014 decision also provides that any change or alteration to the then-existing site plan is to be brought before this zoning board. And if it requires a major modification to the current site plan, then the zoning board is to hold a public hearing to why we are here. The petitioner is before you seeking a major modification to the site plan as he's looking to add a building similar to the one now... that now exists on the undeveloped portion of the lot. There is ample area and lot frontage to meet all setback and parking requirements of today's current zoning. While I don't see any rhyme or reason behind the zoning board in its 2014 decision restricting the commercial uses to those specified in the decision, the petitioner is fully prepared, if required, to adhere to those same restrictions. I, on the other hand, think it would make an awful lot more sense to simply prohibit business uses with the... which the board feels would be detrimental to the neighborhood or zoning district. That, to me, would make much more sense than trying to say what is allowed and list all of these different uses. They're never going to cover every use. In order to construct the proposed building and provide for adequate parking, I'm told from our building commissioner that a special permit is required under the town's bylaws as it will entail clearing an area of 50,000 square feet or more. Request for this special permit is therefore part of this application. Upon a favorable response from this board on the special permit, the petitioner is prepared to have his engineer provide a more detailed plan to address any areas of concern and then pursue the site plan at a date to be continued. See, you have... the plan that you have in front of you that's been submitted is... gives you the basics of what's being proposed. The actual site plan would require a more definitive plan, certainly something that would probably cost five times what this plan costs. And we're looking for the special permit to be granted and then come back and deal with the site plan based on whatever recommendations you now give us in terms of what you're looking for, if there's anything specific on the plan. I can tell you, I know that I did have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Rowley and with Mr. Madden in regards to their understanding of the provision needing a special permit to take down 50,000 square feet of trees. And I think there's some contradiction between them or they don't all agree that a special permit is needed for that purpose when you're expanding an existing use rather than creating brand-new construction on a new lot. Either way, at least 50,000 square feet of trees would be removed. So to alleviate any questions, the granting of the special permit for that purpose would alleviate any discussion over what the meaning of the zoning bylaw really is.
Is this... looking at the building, is this to the left?
It's to the left of the building as you face the building.
Does it dip all the way down there?
It does.
Got high power lines over there, too?
It stops, Carl. Where you see the high tension lines run along Minnit and then turn and run back. So that's where we would stop. It is where it meets the power line that runs, you know, perpendicular to Minnit.
Not that you know yet, but where would the entrance be?
Those are the two entrances shown.
So it'll stay that... those entrances will stay the same for this lot?
Well, those are new. Those are new entrances.
That's the new building. That's the proposed new building. The other building is to the right. So we're not doing anything to the existing building.
Right, but you don't know what type of business is going in there either? In the volume of traffic volume?
No, I would say it's probably... given my experience, it's likely similar to my existing tenants. So, you know, I have a granite company that's coming, that's gonna do a showroom there. I have a fellow who does canvas work there. I have an ambulance company there. I have a fellow who services garage doors there. And then I have United Rentals who's coming at the end of the building. So that's the kind of mix. I don't see a retail... if your question is to ask a high-volume retail, I don't see that use.
I say that because if they're building... they're gonna build a school there, if that ever comes, you know, the traffic volume's gonna go up even higher. Not that it's gonna stop you from running the business, but...
My experience to date, being across the school, you know, from a school, is that about 8:10 in the morning, it's very busy there. And it lasts till about 8:20, and then it's gone. And then in the afternoon, you know, it's similar. It's about 10 or 15 minutes in the afternoon that it's very busy. And then for the rest of the day, it's quiet.
If I may, Jim?
Okay, yeah.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
What I understand... correct me if I'm wrong. The applicant's here tonight to seek a special permit to build the place, and then he's gonna come to further details on the plans.
Yes.
We're talking full site plan, parking, traffic, all these things, landscaping. And as I recall, last time, we had a hearing with Mr. Mike. We did discuss you have to include the other one because the other one last time was rushed in with your parking. I know you had too many parking that you don't need, but we did discuss that you're gonna bring it in with this one so it goes in harmony together with the other building.
I have a plan that shows both buildings on the lot, if that's what you wanna see.
Right, but last time, I know you want to change something so you get your business going, but we did... you did mention you're coming with this plan. And I remember said... I remember very clearly, we kinda let the other one slide so you come with a master plan for the whole thing. So I would like personally to see in the future the other building. I know it's the same project, same owner. To see, like, for instance, the landscape in the front to go in harmony with the new one, especially you next to the school, so... and make it look better for everyone. So I don't wanna see a nice building, brand-new, with all nice landscaping. You are the same owner next door without doing the same, which last time we gave you a big break on that few things you asked for.
I guess, Nazee, I'm trying to understand what you're saying is that what you see for landscaping out in front of the existing building is, I think, what I'm gonna propose on the next building. I think that's not... you're not... that's not enough landscaping for you?
I don't know. I'm... it's gonna comply. It's gonna... whatever... we're gonna have to have a 53G account. Mr. Rowley gonna have to review it. It's gonna be a landscaping architect. So it's gonna comply with the zoning bylaw. That's my... that's what we kinda said last time.
Okay.
So whatever you wanna do, I would like... I can't make you... I can't vote on it. I would like to see that both building goes in harmony together.
I thought Jim was running this meeting.
No, no, that's my opinion.
He just asked for it to be able to comment.
And I'm just... comment, I'm just letting you know what this gentleman is for. Because he's gonna... he needs more detailed plans, so that's my comment.
But it says a special permit specifically for the clearing, right?
It's one special permit for the clearing and a special permit that allows us to put up the second building, subject to site plan review. So site plan review is more or less what conditions you're going to place upon us that you would like to see on the plan. We intend on the new building to comply with all of the zoning requirements and the proper setbacks, et cetera. We can't change the building that's there. That's been allowed for the last 45 or 50 years. We can't set it back further, et cetera. But we certainly can do what Nazee is suggesting by having both buildings on the plan, showing the landscaping on both buildings and showing where the parking is for the... for both buildings on the entire parcel.
Do you own to the right... the right side is cleared already?
That's fenced.
That's fenced, that's...
And there's a... if you drove into the property, Carl, and you looked through the fence... I put up a berm. I was required by the previous board to put up a berm. That's where my property stops, but you can only see that berm.
The board's to the right. That's cleared already. It wasn't cleared when I was a kid.
Inside the fence area is yours.
Other side of the... the other side of the plastic fence.
Yes, that's me. But when you go beyond the berm, that's another owner that I don't... I don't know who that is. I think it's an offcape.
How big is that?
What's inside the fence? It's about 10,000 or 12,000 feet, I think.
Before... anybody else on the board have any burning questions before I turn this to the public? Or any comments? Okay. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this project? Are you saying you'd like to speak in favor or... okay, come on up.
Alan Slaven, Selectman, also live on Oak Street. Mr. Gian Cola has done a project earlier on Route 6 and 28, which I think everybody probably knows about. It's the old Cranberry Chevrolet facility that kinda got dilapidated and fell apart. It gives you an idea of what he does and how he does things. It's been a real asset to the whole area there. It's clean, it's well taken care of. When Snow and Jones moved out of the building that he bought, that place I thought was gonna be a derelict forever because it was not an easy building to do anything with. And he spent a lot of time and effort to make that extremely attractive, nice-looking. The landscaping in the front is really well done. That place is clean, there's no trash, et cetera. So as far as what he wants to do is like matching another piece to the side with the type of businesses he wants to put in. They're low-impact and basically they're low-cost for the town to have those businesses there with the return coming back would be a positive cash flow, which is what we need. The other piece that I'm a little confused and maybe Dave can answer for me. We have... we found the hard way. We have in Chapter 7 of our zoning bylaws, a thing called specifications. And right in the bottom of the foolish thing, it talks about 50,000 square feet or more clearing. You've got... I think it said it had to be a site plan from the planning board, not from the ZBA, correct?
I think so.
Right, but if they have to come in front of the ZBA for anything else...
Yeah, I'm just talking about that one piece.
You'd be hurt at the same time, but it is a planning board requirement in our bylaw.
Yeah, it's something that was...
It says a special permit from the planning board. It says 50,000 square feet at any...
Right.
So if this... if this board this evening decides to act favorably upon the request to allow the building, they'll still need to go in front of the planning board and get permission to cut the trees?
It wouldn't be a condition. It would just be that they still are required to go before the planning board for that.
Okay.
It's very simple and straightforward.
Is there no provision, though, that says that if you require a special permit or a variance on the Board of Appeals that you become the special permit granting authority?
Not in that specification section of Charlie. It's really... if someone dumped that in there, it's embarrassing because it's buried in there.
If I may... no, Charlie's right. Once a special permit, it's... we grant... the zoning board allowed this, the clearance. It is a planning board matter if it doesn't require a special permit. But once a special permit or a variance, we become the granting authority, right?
No, it doesn't say that under the regulations.
But that's us...
This is Section 1214, applicability.
Why don't you read it, Ken, make it easy for everybody?
Says, "The special permit granting authority under Section 1200 shall be the planning board. No person shall undertake clearing or grading activity of an area greater than 50,000 square feet at any one time or in increments such that the total land area of the budding property within the control of any person graded in a 36-month period will exceed 50,000 square feet without first obtaining a site alteration special permit from the planning board unless specifically exempted under the next section."
Which is 1216.
Right, but once a special permit or a variance, it becomes... the granting authority becomes the zoning board. Correct me if I'm wrong, Lenny. Counselor, sorry.
I think you have two different issues here. One is that my guess is that the provision you're referring to occurred before the town elected or changed its zoning bylaw to provide that you become the special permit granting authority and the site plan review granting authority whenever we have to come in front of you for either a variance or a special permit. It would make absolutely no logical sense that we would come before you for site plan, get a site plan, and then go in front of a planning board who says, "But we're not gonna let you clear the area." I mean, you have to put some common sense into the zoning bylaw and how it's written and when it's put together. The whole idea was to allow people to come in front of you for a special permit and to have you then be the special permit granting authority for that and for site plan and for your project, not to sub... to split it up between different boards and have you go back and forth. I mean, that was the whole intent of the change. So the fact that somebody didn't specifically say, "Oh, yeah, and include Section 7", I think you just have to use some common sense because otherwise it makes no sense.
I think what you gotta do is just...
Excuse me, excuse me. Are we reading Section 1215?
1214.
1214.
1214.
1214. Okay.
In the new version.
Okay, so just...
We actually have to look at the old bylaw?
Just before anybody else talks, I want a chance to read 214, 215, and 216 where it says exemptions and it starts specifically talking about clearing and grading. So I'd like a minute.
It's okay.
There's a new... there's a new set of bylaws and I'm looking at the new set revised February 2018. And I think there's been reading...
The old ones.
From the old section, so...
Yeah, the old section is 1204 and 1206, so...
Is I right that 1214 in the new version is referencing sections that don't exist in the new version?
You got it.
1201 doesn't exist in the new version.
They eliminated everything.
So we have to look back to 1201 in the old version?
Well, they just eliminated... this whole thing should have been taken out of there. And of course, we'll have Ken take care of that shortly and follow town meeting and fix this.
Yeah.
Because we came up with an issue with someone else clearing land and the Conservation Commission okayed the clearing without knowing this provision was there and now we're in the middle of a mess.
They didn't give me one.
Unfortunately, what's sitting there right now that we have doesn't refer back, you know, that there's a difference between, you know, the ZBA or the planning board. It just says what it says. There should have been a provision in that particular section saying if they have to come before the ZBA, then the ZBA, like, they do and other things, would then have control.
Yeah.
Because like, you know, when you have a variance, like we did with Walmart, you know, the ZBA took care of the site plan for Walmart. The planning board took care of the front part of the property The planning board took care of the front part of the property because of specified law. This is something that just got passed through. And so, I'll just bring it up because it came out of nowhere.
All right, so if we actually look at the old bylaw, the past bylaw, which, that new bylaw that you guys have now was just recently approved by the AG's office. So at the time this application was made, at the end of this, it says that a special permit from the planning board unless specifically exempt under Section Twelve-O-six of this bylaw. If you go to Twelve-O-six I...
Hold on, right there. You're reading the old bylaw. In the new bylaw, there is no Twelve-O-six.
Twelve-Sixteen, but I believe it's Twelve-Sixteen.
Twelve-six, so it's a typo?
But I believe we have to use the bylaw that was in effect at the time of the application. Is that right, Len?
I certainly couldn't be going by a bylaw that didn't exist.
Right, right. So, under the bylaw that was in effect at the time the application was made, Twelve-O-six I does say, "Construction of structures, roadways, parking lots, and associated activities for either residential or non-residential structures or use in receipt of a special permit from the Board of Appeals or Planning Board." So it does call out both boards.
Yeah, when he did it in the Twelve-Fourteen, they left that out.
Okay.
So in Twelve-Fourteen, Twelve-O-six is Twelve-Sixteen.
Twelve-O-six is Twelve-Sixteen now.
And Twelve-O-one is now Twelve-Eleven, is that right? Okay.
And what they didn't do is they missed that one little piece where they put it over. And I'm not sure we can file a scriveness error in the bylaw. So, whichever way you want to do it is fine. I just want to bring up the piece that this has come out of nowhere, and it's now causing a problem. And if you're asking me, it should come before the ZBA, the special permit for the clearing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, hearing none. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Okay, again, hearing none, I'd like to turn, has there been a letter of denial, or has there been any written decision by the building department?
There has not, because there was an existing building, existing site, so this went in as a modification to an existing site plan.
Okay.
But if I could just add one more comment, Mr. Joe?
That's why I'm asking...
Okay. I'm not completely sure that construction of the new building requires a special permit. I think the only special permit required in this case is going to be a special permit to clear the land. We only require relief for more than one principal residential building per a lot. We don't have a requirement for a commercial structure, so I believe the only requirement in this case is a special permit for land clearing more than fifty thousand square feet.
So, in your review of both the old and the new bylaws, who is going to have the authority to make that decision? The planning board or this board?
In my opinion, based on what I just read...
After what you've read, because you read these things like they were the Bible, and you go and you kneel down and pray to the Bible.
I do, every day, every day, so.
That's right.
Under Twelve-O-six I, I believe that you guys do have authority over that, that's just my opinion. But that's, if he gets a special permit to clear, he's telling you the site plan.
You take it back to the old version. If you read the plain language of the new version, there's no room to argue that we are.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but again, my opinion, this is only my opinion, is that we have to use the bylaw that was in effect at the time the application was made.
I got you, okay.
Can I just point out something?
Sure, go ahead.
I hate to shoot myself in the foot, but I have to go back to the prior zoning decision, which says, "In the event you want to alter the site plan, you must go back before the zoning board for a special permit." So, even though from all other sites, I agree with David, and he and I have discussed this whole thing, we've gone back and forth many times, that realistically, because it's a pre-existing commercial use, and it's been that way since really the nineteen-fifties, I shouldn't need any permit from you at all, except for the fact that I'm stuck with that prior decision, which is on record, and I can't ignore it. And I don't, I'm not going to pretend to come before the board and ignore the fact that it exists, and I've put it in my letter of intent. So as I see it, I do need a special permit from you to modify the site plan. I'm not asking for a change of use, because I'm not changing the use. It's been a commercial use, and it's still a non-conforming, pre-existing commercial use, and it will continue to be that way. But because that's in that decision, I feel that I am modifying the site plan. I think it's a major modification when I put in a building the same size, and I think I need you to approve that as a special permit. So, that's what I'm asking for, and I certainly agree with David that as part of that, once you do a site plan and a special permit, the fifty thousand square foot clearance becomes almost a non-issue. I think it's an automatic approval, because I can't build the building without clearing the land. So, if you're going to allow me to build the building, then I have to be able to clear the land.
May I say something?
Sure, go ahead, Nazee.
This is the reason why I ask, has to be a package plan, because you expand in the use. It's not a separate lot, otherwise you'd be asking for a variance, correct?
It's not a separate lot, it's the same lot.
Right, so that's why I ask Mike for, to make a package for the whole thing, rectify his parking over there, or whatever landscape, and that's why I allow you a special permit for expanding. Now, like Mr. Baptiste said before, it's a separate lot, separate difference, then you need a variance. So, I think the special permit, expanding the existing nonconditions is the way to go.
And I'm fine with that.
And go with the full site plan, with the town engineer review and all that.
And I'm absolutely fine with that. I don't have any problem combining, we have plans already drafted with both parcels on the lot. We'll just have to make that part of our site plan engineering work, and you folks will have full opportunity to review that, and with Charlie, we'll work with him ahead of time, but we understand you can make any conditions that you think are appropriate.
So I'm going to ask you to summarize what you asked this board to vote on this evening.
I'm asking the board to vote on my application for a special permit to modify the existing site plan by allowing for the second building, subject to site plan review, and a special permit to clear the lot in order to create that building or to construct the building. So, that's what we're looking for tonight, and going to ask you to postpone the site plan to your first meeting in June, to give Mr. Madden enough time to satisfy all of the requirements of a full site plan, and to work with Charlie ahead of time in order for them to touch all the issues that are important.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, the second meeting in June.
Go ahead, Ken.
I want to make a motion that we accept it as presented by the applicant, just as he presented it.
Just as, Mr. Bello just summarized it. Okay.
What were you saying?
I have a question first, if I might.
Before we act on that motion, go ahead, Charlie.
I'm not sure whether it's appropriate or not, to the extent that it makes any difference. I'm not sure that the building that's there today was there in nineteen fifty. I actually did the site survey for the mine at school, and I can't honestly say that in nineteen fifty, or sixty, some odd, sixty-two, sixty-three, when that was done, that that building was there. I don't know that makes any difference to your special permit modification. I know that in a lot of instances, when the assessor's records were upgraded, they put crazy dates in there for when the assumed buildings were built. Neither here nor there. My, the main question I have would be with respect to the driveways, and whether or not Mr. Giancollo might consider combining both sites with one driveway, rather than having two more in that area. This one is sort of staggered right across from the main entrance to the mine at school, and I know all of the talk about closing the school and everything else, but nevertheless, it's still in existence. It would be possible to put a single entrance, which could go either direction into these buildings, and eliminate at least one of these curb cuts. I see no problem with the one which is on the westerly end, that's far enough away from everything else that it makes circulation possible. I'm just wondering if it would be possible to combine them in the middle.
So you're suggesting, instead of having four curb cuts, you want three?
Three, one of which could go either direction.
I don't want to tie his hands right now until we know what's going on.
Want to see the site plan review?
Mike tie his hands.
But if you said the special permit's going to be as he's got it shown, then you're tied to this.
Well, we're tied to it, then.
So, we're still coming back for site plan review, and this is subject to modification. All we're doing this evening is granting a special permit. Everything else has to come back in front of us.
Modification, application.
Modification, exactly, so...
So long as the language of whatever you vote on doesn't pin it to this particular plan.
I got it. And I'm sure the applicant is hearing your suggestion, whether it has merit or not is a business decision for him to make when he comes back for site plan review. I just don't want to get, you know, buried in minutia here. Carl started to make a motion. I'm going to ask Attorney Bello again to summarize what we're seeking tonight, so that Carl can again move on that.
We're requesting a special permit to modify the existing site plan, subject to our presenting a more formal plan for the site plan, and a special permit for the clearing of the lot. So it's a special permit for the modification, which allows for the construction of the building and a clearing of the lot, all subject to a site plan, a full site plan, that will pertain to both buildings as Nazee's requested. Okay. And of course, in very plain language, it's, does the applicant go out and spend another thirty-five thousand dollars doing a site plan, and then come back and have somebody say, "We're not going to let you put up a second building because we don't think it should be a commercial use." So, we want to get over that hurdle, and we're only there theoretically because I think of the decision that says I have to come back for a special permit. I mean, if that decision wasn't there, we'd be arguing and saying we shouldn't need anything.
I get the gravity of the next step, and that's why I'm being specific. Carl, are you ready to make your motion?
Yeah. You want to close the... Continue.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion to close the second, the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Wilmer, we'd like you to be part of this vote.
Four is enough, continue.
Four is enough, that's right. Okay, go ahead, Carl.
I make a motion to accept the...
I can't hear you, Carl.
Can't hear.
Thank you.
You couldn't hear us a minute ago. I make a motion to accept the applicant, as Attorney Bello stated, for the site plan review.
Do I have a second on that?
Second up, if I can.
Okay, I do have a second from Jake. Any further comments, conditions? Jan, you look like you might have something that you want to say.
No, 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 no. I'm just in my, so, yeah.
You're good?
So the motion is to approve the request for modification to have a site, to...
Grant a special permit.
To erect a second building.
Right, is subject to what's going to come...
Subject to a site plan review.
Right.
And a special permit to clear the lot.
Yeah.
And I want to make an emphasis that the curb cuts seem to be pretty important, so when you come back for that site plan review, we want it to be...
We'll absolutely take all that into consideration, and like I say, we'll meet with Charlie ahead of time.
Okay, so I'm ready to take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yes, no.
Okay, I think we carry four, one, zero. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we continue this matter then to the second meeting in June, for us to come back before you on the site plan, so that you can make your comments?
We can, we probably should vote on that, too, so...
Wouldn't that be a completely different application?
No, it's part of the...
It's a part of this?
It was part of this application.
He's got it in here.
Okay.
He's got it in here, he's got it right. So could somebody move for us to continue to the first meeting in June?
Second, please.
Second meeting in June?
Second meeting in June.
What's that date?
June twentieth.
That would be June twentieth.
I just want to make sure I'm here.
That would be the twenty-seventh.
Twentieth?
It'd be twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry, the twenty.
Twentieth. June twenty. Continued to June twenty. We'll assume it's been moved in the seconded. I hear some mumbling.
Second level.
All in favor?
I'm all set, yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, you continued, your site, your special permit is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, petition five-eighteen, Linda and Tom Hannan, Sixty-two West Boulevard.
Got anything to turn in over there?
Did I sign anything on this one, for the trees or no?
No, you could just cut that map, too.
My bad.
Jake has, Jake's...
She got here, that's the Cabellus one.
We don't know that.
Jake's lacking over here, Jake, Jake.
Get the map, Jake.
The land, the land towards Wareham, to the side of Minehead Avenue, Minehead School, is owned by the condos. You know this Minehead, Minehead, they own right up to the school.
That's the Dr. Adrian, the Dr. something.
David, do you know what happened to the lawyer?
Can you imagine if the poor gentleman...
This is one ninety-seven Onset Ave. That's one ninety-seven.
One ninety-seven Onset Ave, that's Cabellus. We don't want to give them big stuff.
No, I don't.
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to go ahead and start reading this, okay? The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on April eleventh, two thousand eighteen, at six-thirty PM in Room Three-Twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, Forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., zero-two-five-seven-one. To consider, petition number five-dash-eighteen for a variance/special permit from the requirements of Article Six, Table Six-Twenty-two, Article Thirteen, Section Thirteen Thirty-five of the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Thomas and Linda Hannan, care of Lockwood Architects, Post Office Box Ninety-five, Onset, Mass., oh-two-five-five-eight, seeking to raise the existing single-family dwelling and reconstruct a new, less non-conforming structure located at Sixty-two West Boulevard, Onset, Mass., that appears on Assessor's Map One, Lot Six-eighty-six in the Onset Village One zoning district.
All right, may I address, please?
Good evening, Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects, representing the petitioners, Tom and Linda Hannan, who are with me. They reside at the address Sixty-two West Boulevard, which is the subject property.
And what are you trying to play, can you just explain more, what are you trying to do?
Okay, the project involves demolition of the existing structure that's raised with a Z as opposed to an A, I, S, and construction of a new house on the same property, moved slightly forward on the property from the location of the current house. No new nonconformities are created, and we think that the new project will fit into the neighborhood more cohesively than the existing house, and it will certainly provide better living accommodations for the Hannans, with some potential for some first floor bedroom in the future. Mr. Hannan, having had a medical situation about a year ago, we made it very difficult for him to get up the very steep existing stairs. These will be code-compliant stairs. There'll be a basement garage on the ground-level floor... There'll be a basement, a garage on the ground level floor, and a ground level, and then first floor and a second floor above that. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. So I guess what we're looking for, we have to decide if this matters detriment to the neighborhood, that would take us to a variance, and if we don't believe it's not detrimental to the neighborhood, it will be special permit, then we treat it as a special permit. And then we go from there. So we start by both questions, again, as quick as possible, because we have a long night. Wilmer? Do you have a question?
No.
Nothing. Jim?
I, I see the words alteration and expansion of existing non-conforming, but this, in, in the letter from the building department.
Okay. There is no alteration.
So we're not altering, we're not expanding, we're raising, we're tearing it down to the ground, past the foundation?
Tearing, tearing it down to the ground, including the foundation.
Okay. Just, thank you. That's, somebody else?
Jake.
No questions.
Jan?
So you have actually some pre-existing non-conformities that are decreasing?
Yes, that's correct.
And you note, with the exception of, of one, it's, you notice a slight increase in the setbacks. What is the, what is the slight increase in the setbacks?
Well, we're increasing the setbacks from the current non-compliant.
Uh-huh. Yeah, yeah, what is it? You said slight. What is slight?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. If you look at the site plan, down in the lower left-hand corner, there is a table. The minimum side, as you know, well know, is 10 feet. On the southerly side, it is 4.4 feet currently, and we're proposing 4.8 feet. On the nor, on the rear, it is currently complying at 24 feet. On the right, it's currently complying and will remain complying.
Okay.
Compliant, rather. I'm sorry.
So, so the sole increase in any non-conformity is to go from 4.4 on, I can't remember which part of the property it is, to 4.8?
Correct.
All other...
That's, yeah, so we aren't increasing that non-conformity, we're reducing that non-conformity?
I apologize. I thought that I had asked about the slight increase that you referenced.
It's decreased.
And I apologize, I realize you haven't, it's late and I'm just trying to...
We're increasing the setback, but decreasing the con, non-conformity.
He's decreasing the setback.
You're increasing, you're increasing your setback.
The setback, yes. It's doing better, yeah.
So, um, one, one second.
And decreasing the non-con...
Thus decreasing. So there is no increase in any non-conformity? I apologize, it's getting...
Correct.
It's been a long day.
It has been a long day.
Um, yes.
If, if I could just add, as it says here in my letter, every non-conformity that's existing now is improving.
Yes.
Just to be clear for the record, everything is improving, but the building still remains non-conforming.
Oh.
And it is, he is making the building overall, when he builds a new building, it is going to be bigger, so it's enlarging the structure, and it's higher. Even though the existing non-conformities are improving, it still remains non-conforming.
Right.
So in order to make that building any bigger, it's intensification, that's why the special permit is required.
Uh-huh.
All right. Jan, anymore? Anything else?
How much bigger are you making it?
Um, let's see, the, the footprints, uh, the relative footprints are shown on the site plan.
I saw, I, I, you can tell me much quicker than I can. I, I, I...
And, and I, I wish I had an easy answer to that. The footprint is increasing, I would say, 20%.
Existing gross living area, I'm sorry, I'm, existing net living area, 906 feet. Gross area, 1959. Effective area, 1,050.
Do I have those numbers in there somewhere?
Existing. You know what size the new building will be? Square feet?
The new building will be, I think, about 1,600 square feet.
Okay. The gross area of the existing building is 1959, but the living area is 906. So you're gonna, your new building is going to be 1,600 living area?
Between both floors, right?
Yes, both floors.
Okay.
To me, it looks pretty much the same footprint.
It's not my own expertise, you know?
Got you.
I haven't seen this one in a while, but I believe the existing structure is just one level?
No, it's two levels.
Two levels, okay.
We have, and part of the issue is upstairs is, we lost a lot of space on the second floor because it's all porch. It's all wraparound porch, it's just not living space right now.
Yeah.
So we're just basically going to take that over. That's a big part of the additional space, the additional living space, is taking over that outside porch area. It's a huge wraparound outdoor, outdoor deck upstairs. All right. I see.
There's a picture of the existing in the packet.
The field card kind of gives them a good picture.
As, as does the, I believe, the last, the last page in, in the booklet.
All right. Well, I think the footprint for the new building is smaller than the old one, anyway, the way it looks here, if you add them up. Anyway...
Is, I think on the first floor, the living space, there's also another wraparound porch that right now is enclosed, but it's technically not counted as living space on the numbers. So it would, that's not getting counted.
All right, Carl.
Nothing.
All right. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor against this project?
Somebody come out.
Yes, ma'am.
I have someone.
Just a name for the record.
Denise Hickson. I just have some questions I'd like to ask, please. My first question is, I'd like to know the height of the existing structure and the height of the new structure. How the two compare?
Okay, Mr. Lockwood?
The existing structure is about 20 and a half feet, thereabouts. The new structure will be about 26 and a half feet, be about six feet taller.
20.5, and the new one is 26 feet?
20 or 20 and, 20 or 21, and it's, next one, the new structure's going to be six feet higher.
Okay.
So you're looking about six feet difference, roughly, six to eight feet?
And that includes the height required for both the garage underneath and the, getting it out of the flood zone?
The new structure will be...
Everything has to be asked through the board, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That includes the height to get it out of the flood zone and the garage?
Ridge to ridge, six feet higher.
Ridge to ridge, six feet higher.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. My second question is, there's going to be a fair amount of excavation on this project, and I was interested to know if there's any adverse impact to water table, water flow to immediate butters, of which I am one. What would our remedy be?
Okay.
We do miraculous work, but we cannot make water go uphill. We are the lowest property on...
Right, but you gotta contain the water with some, some silt fence, some dirt, not going to the neighbors.
It will, we are the lowest property on the street.
Oh, you're the lowest?
So we cannot make the water rise.
Oh, okay.
We cannot move water tables. The, the structure is not of the magnificence of a John Hancock Tower, and this is not the Back Bay.
All right. Which, are you a neighbor in the Back?
Yes.
What's your concern specifically? What's your concern from the work, the construction, from the dirt or the water?
Well, I wanted to just make, I've lived in other areas, and when they, we've had pools put in, et cetera, it has disrupted the water flow, even though people were downhill, it...
Right.
It, it changes things. I just wanted to understand what the remedy would be, if there was any impact, that's all.
You have to go to conservation, don't you?
We have been to conservation and have passed through conservation and, but, and received a notice of...
You guys had to put hay bales and all that?
We are going to be putting hay, hay bales and, you know, the standard order of conditions.
Are you on Second Street?
I'm on Second Street.
All right. Did you go to conservation meeting?
I sent a letter to the conservation committee.
So these things, usually conservation take care of it, they make them put hay bales for runoffs?
Yes. They, they are making them put hay bales, from what I understand.
Right. We can't do this, they can.
I understand. I'm just asking about the site plan and what the remedy was, and I'd like to also understand what any retaining walls would be on this structure. I have only seen the beautiful diagrams of the house and not the site plan.
Retaining wa, are you building retaining walls there?
They'll be incidental. There's some incidental retaining walls currently on the property, and the elevation at the rear of the property is not going to, not proposed to be changed significantly. So the...
So is the garage going to be in the front or the...
The garage will be accessed from the front, but actually under, underneath the house, you know?
On West Boulevard.
I'm sorry, what?
On West Boulevard.
On West Boulevard, correct.
And the new house actually is 10 feet further away from their house, so we're moving it forward, so it'll be...
I, I understand that. Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Linda. So the other, I just have a comment then, in general, about the proposed new structure. It's higher than the existing structure, and I understand you have to get out of the flood zone. However, the front of this building is essentially a three-story structure in an area of predominantly one and a half story cottages. It's considerably taller than all of the immediate butters, which are one and a half story houses. Two houses abutting or beside this property have done lovely renovations, maintaining the character of Onset Village. And a third property on the block was completely razed and restruck, reconstructed, again, maintaining that same cottage feel, one and a half stories, with dormers, things like that. That is my concern as we move forward, as this project moves forward, is that the overall height will impact the neighborhood. When you impact height, you impact light, you impact airflow, and you impact views. That's my concern. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments.
You're welcome.
The, unfortunately, the land, to answer your question, ma'am, I mean, they get like seven feet of difference from the beginning of the land to the back. So that's what, I guess, they had to do. It looks like three-story structure because the elevation of the property, it's not a flat lot. Maybe different houses in the neighborhood, they're flat, it didn't look as high, but they're entitled of it, if the board allows it, so. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Thank you, Denise Hickson. I just wanted to share my comments, that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, want to come forward, please?
Hi, I'm Linda Scharf, and again, I'm just asking questions. I thought that, I thought when I took a look at the plans, that the total height was going to be 35 feet. Is that incorrect?
He said 26.
Right, but I read 35 when I looked at it, so...
35 is the maximum allowed under zoning, and it's, as you look at the plan, it says that it's less than 35. The proposed height overall, not as per zoning, per zoning would be to the mean of the principal roof, the highest principal roof. So we were, we're actually 20 some...
26 plus.
Yes, because of the way the, the site slopes. The, the mean and the ridge are about, are the same height, but measured differently, if everybody followed that.
No, could you please give us a definition of the word mean?
The, the midpoint.
Okay.
The midpoint of the principal roof.
To the average of the highest of the...
The average, so the, they, as zoning defines it, it's from the average of the grade to the mean or the midpoint of the principal roof. We are, and that, we are going to be about 26 feet.
So what he's trying to tell you, if you're looking from the garage, you're looking about 30 feet. If you're looking from the backside, you're looking about 20, the average 26, so, because it's different, about six feet on the elevation of the gra, of the, of the land. So the garage side is more than 26. It's like, more like 30.
Yeah.
But the, the town allows 35. Let me, let's David explain it more to you.
Yeah, well, if I did just add, actually, for the record, our bylaw counts height as, as, based on the mean grade to the highest point of the roof, not to the midpoint. So I was going to request that if you do approve this, that we can get a certified building height at the end of this project.
Not the average?
It's, it's the average grade to the highest point. Mean grade to the highest point of the structure.
Did they change the definition?
Yes, they did. Yes, they did, a while ago.
Okay.
It was in effect at the time of this denial of the rules. This was the first...
So, so you're telling me the height has to be from the highest point?
The highest point, the highest point of the building to the mean grade, so average grade...
Yeah.
I think we had it said 11th street.
In which case, we're still compliant.
I think it says this, I think it's the same thing, just worded differently, frankly.
No, it's not to the midpoint of the roof. That would be a big difference.
No, no, okay, not the...
No, to the ridge.
Midpoint of the mean.
The highest point of the roof.
Right, but, and then from, from the, from the land, from the ground, from the average.
Average grade to the highest point of the roof.
For instance, these get 10 to 17, so basically the average about 13 and a half, you're talking about, from the 13 and a half on, on, on the grade.
Right, to the highest point.
Right. I don't think he's got more than 26, if you add them up.
I, I'm looking at the plan and adding up what I'm adding up here, it looks, it looks like it's close. I'm not saying that it's, that it's higher, it looks like it's close, so...
Close to what?
35 feet.
All right. Well, what's the height inside floor, on the floors? What do you get, 88-inch studs or 92.58s? What are you using?
I'm sorry, what?
And inside the houses, what size joists are you using?
Um, we're going to use 12, 10-inch joists, probably.
10-inch, and you get 88 studs or 92.58s? What do you have? You're using eight, you're going to have eight...
Eight-foot floor on the, eight-foot ceiling height on the first floor, 7, 8 on the second floor.
So eight...
Uh, that is a 12 pitch, correct.
Yeah, you close, maybe you should get elevation, so, do you want to do after construction or, or even prior?
It's, it's up to him, if he wants to take the risk, but I, I would want a certified building height in order to approve a final inspection on this.
We have no problem with that.
You might have to change that pitch a little bit.
If that's necessary to do, we will do that.
Yeah, because I'm adding them up quick. You're up there.
You're in it, you're in it. But we're really going to measure it from here.
Right, but from here, you're looking about 36, 37.
Okay.
All right, so why don't we do that? So you're going to have to get a, you're going to make sure the height complies before you get that permit.
It will.
All right? So maybe go to 10 pitch or 8 pitch?
If, if necessary, we'll do that.
Maybe the second floor, go 88-inch studs, instead I knew gained you like four inches.
Whatever we need to do, we'll do.
And I had another question, too.
Yeah.
Where the building was going to be changed on the property itself, given that height, I'm on one street over, and I look out over that, that, out my window and see the water. So I was trying to get what the height was going to be when the land, when the houses moved into the new location, so that I could understand what my new view, or if there's any change in my view outside my window.
I mean, if you, you want to look at the site plan, maybe I'll explain it to you.
Well, she, if I may, she was kind enough to provide me with a, a picture of the view Well, she, if I may, she was kind enough to provide me with a picture of the view out her window. And I looked at the, looked at it, and where we have shoved the, as we have moved the prop, building forward on the property, it has gotten actually out of the way of, she could see the top of the roof, the old roof, but we've moved forward on the property, so now she won't be able to see any roof at all.
It's your contention that her view may increase?
Her view will be increased, enhanced, yes.
Enhanced.
Right now, this is her view, this is our property there.
And this is going over to the right?
And that's moving over to the right. So this is moving up a little bit higher, but it's gonna be over here.
Does she know that? Did you see that?
No, I didn't see what the, yeah, but I hadn't seen it.
This is their, their roof right there. See, I'm going higher.
Okay, so it'll be approximately that height. Thank you, I, I.
You good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions and comments?
Anyone else? Okay, somebody else wanna add anything?
I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I'd like to ask a question, how old is this house? When was it built?
It was built more than seventy-five years ago, and we have been through historic.
You have been through.
To have approval for demolition.
Anyone else? I hear none, let's move to close that public hearing.
So moved.
They have a second to close it. Second by call, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, it's closed.
So once you hit seventy-five, you gotta get a permit to demolish?
Fifty.
That's, that's right. I've, I've got a couple more years left on me, but then, so they're gonna have to get a permit to demolish me.
No, it's actually fifty, you're ready for the.
I'm ready, I'm gone.
All right.
The age discrimination already kicked in, never mind.
I forget, I'm too old.
All right, so, what's the wishes of the board?
I don't see any, I don't see any problems with this, I'm, I'm able to make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second it.
All right, well, first, we gotta make a motion to get a relief for thirteen thirty-five. So you guys think it's detriment, not detriment?
So, well, the thirteen thirty-five, it's two-pronged, right? Thought we, we have to find both, that it's, does, there's no substantial increase, and that there's not substantially more detrimental. I, I, in my opinion, I would suggest that it is not.
Why don't you make a motion?
So I'd make a motion to allow, is a special permit.
Okay.
On grounds that, that the proposed plan does not result in a substantial increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure.
I second that motion.
And, well, and also that.
It's not detrimental.
And also that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, in particular, because in all but one respect, well, no, in all respects, it decreases the non-conformities.
All right, do I have a second for that?
I did.
Second by Jim, all in favor, and that's aye.
Aye.
All right, and the second motion?
The motion, my motion is gonna be to approve, but I'm gonna change my verbiage a little bit. I'm not gonna say to approve as presented. I'm gonna say to approve subject to the structure not to exceed thirty-five feet in height.
Okay. Okay, I'll, with this, plus the standard conditions.
Correct.
And according to plans drafted by J.C. Engineering dated on January twenty, well, dated January twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, architecture plan by Lockwood Architect dated, I'll see your date here, Bill.
Flip it over.
February tenth, two thousand eighteen.
I would just suggest that, I, I wouldn't, I, and subject to, I understand you're wanting to restrict the height. I wouldn't wanna give any impression that I would be okay with it going up to thirty-five feet.
If you say it's twenty-six.
In any regard.
Right.
So mine is based on the.
Twenty-six average.
Right, understanding that it may not be precise, but I certainly.
Don't wanna go up to the thirty-five.
No, no, I'm basing it on these, these plans. So that's my only thing, Jim, I, I don't know if, perhaps I'm misunderstanding your, where you're coming from, but I just wanted to make.
Well, my reason for picking thirty-five is that's.
Because that's statute.
Sure, of course, yeah, absolutely.
With the plans in the, in the butter scene, we don't wanna.
But the six, the six-foot is, is, is one thing, increase. But if, if we were talking about an increase all the way to thirty-five feet, I would, I may have a totally different. So I don't wanna give any impression that I would be approving this to be built up to thirty-five feet, is all I'm saying.
The twenty-six feet that we're talking about is, by the previous calculations, and I apologize for not picking up on that latest wrinkle in the code change. But the relative size change is the same, and we can assure you that the final size, the final height will be less than thirty-five feet.
The change in the method in which you're gonna, what you're now required to measure it, is not gonna result in another ten-plus foot increase.
No, it will not, but it might result in a different number.
A number, but not that much difference.
It could result in a four- or five-foot difference in the way the number is presented, even though the building's in the same place.
Okay, all right.
And that the upper roof is going to be is eight feet tall, so there'd be basically a four-foot differential. So if we're talking twenty-six feet, then we're now talking thirty feet.
But that's quite a change.
And it's not gonna impede in her view?
No. It's, it's coming up six feet from what it was.
So, okay, let's, let's rephrase this before we vote on this. The average from the average, the average height's gonna be twenty-six, so you're saying it's gonna be thirty now?
I'm saying thirty, yeah.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just did a rough calculation based on the side view of the building, and taking the average between what the actual height of the building is on one side, on the high side, and then the low side, and running that up the middle, I got around twenty-seven and a half.
Okay. I'll defer to the surveyor.
Well, roughly. I don't think it'll be thirty, based on what I saw.
I don't think it will be either, but.
I think the point here is that we're, we're trying to be sensitive to the neighborhood, and there was a concern about height.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven's fine.
The board is looking to kinda.
Okay, let me, give me, if you'll give me a second for indulgence here, I will try to get a little better measurement on the drawings here.
I'd hate like hell to have the neighborhood make their house taller, just so that they conform to yours.
Well, I've already done several houses in the immediate neighborhood, and.
Right, listen, Charlie's right, so twen, you're probably twenty-seven. So twenty-seven's okay, but not thirty.
I'll put twenty-eight.
All right.
He's, he's saying twenty-eight to give him a room for fudging.
I said twenty-seven and a half, so we're within a half a foot of each other.
Do I hear, do I hear twenty-seven and three-quarters?
I would say not to exceed twenty-seven, twenty-seven feet on the. What? Let's close the public hearings, close, okay? So try, I would say not to exceed twenty-seven feet, so you have to play with your ceiling height inside.
I think we can make that work.
All right.
Okay, so.
So one of the conditions would be not to exceed twenty-seven feet on the, the average height.
Okay, and it's all going on the recording, because we don't have anything to write it all down on tonight, so.
So I hope you get it, Jasmine.
Speak louder? If I speak any louder, the microphone's gonna blow up.
So I hope you're picking all this, Jasmine? So.
So you want me to restate the motion?
Yeah, restate the motion.
And move to approve the application subject to a height restriction of twenty-seven feet. Per the plans, has necessarily altered to meet that twenty-seven-foot mark. Submitted by Lockwood Engineering and, what's it, GAF?
J.C.
J.C. Engineering. Lockwood Plan dated February two thousand eighteen. J.C. Plan dated January, I believe, two thousand eighteen.
Right. Okay, so do I have a second on that? Second by Jen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Wilma, would you say yes?
Yes.
Okay, it's five-zero-zero, thank you.
Unanimous.
Good.
Thank you. Good job.
Good to go.
Thank you for coming in. It may take us a, it may take us a few extra days to get the written, because we're missing a couple pieces of paper, but we'll go into the office and sign for you.
We have nothing to sign here, so you guys gotta be.
We're gonna have to go by the office and do some signing or sign.
For every decision, there's nothing. I think she was busy or something. Next one. All right, next one. All right, Priscilla Ave is not here, we table this. Oh, you're here? Oh. All right, five, five-dash-eighteen Linda.
One, two, three.
Oh, we did that.
I need one more.
Six-dash-eight, six-dash-eighteen Richard Smith, thirty-five and thirty-nine Priscilla Ave.
Totally. You wanna back? Can't believe you gotta drive to New Hampshire, that's crazy.
Trying to match them up for ya. You can take all of these, and one for me. Put these back, did you guys have two of these?
Yeah, I guess I can put it. Man, I'm sick like a dog.
Everybody gets a piece of paper, whether they want it or not.
The whole thing.
This goes back in the.
That's you. That's for you.
I should be bad. Can you remind her?
Yes.
I'll put it back in my folder.
Again, I don't have anything to. They can read this in. Tough week, that's all, well, things happen. I made a mistake once.
All right.
Zoning Board of Appeal to hold a public hearing on April eleventh, two thousand eighteen, six-thirty P.M. in room three-twenty of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number six-dash-eighteen for a variance slash special permit from the requirements of Article Six, Table six-twenty-one, Article Thirteen, Section thirteen thirty-five of the Wayham Zoning Bylaws, to Richard J. Smith, trustee, one-fifty-six Forest Street, Rainham, Mass. Zero-two-seven-six-seven, seeking to raise the existing structure and reconstruct a larger residential structure located at thirty-five and thirty-nine Priscilla Avenue, Onset, Mass. That's on Assessors' map, one-twenty-four lots seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, and seventy-seven in the R-one-thirty zoning district. So.
That's not an.
That's not an onset, is it? Map one-twenty-four?
That's in Changalai, I think.
Where's thirty-five and thirty-nine Priscilla Avenue?
White Island.
White Island Pond.
White Island.
That certainly isn't Onset, Mass., but it says that here, so I hopefully it was a typo and not what was advertised in the paper, because that could cause you.
One-twenty, map one-twenty-four.
So do we have green cards to the right, if anything was mailed to the right address? To the right of butters? You guys know it's, you know you're in East Wayham, right?
I do.
And when you get your mailing list from the Assessors' Office?
That seems to find us all the time, the tax bill.
See, the note, the address is right, I just don't know if it was.
Priscilla Ave, yeah, Priscilla, I'm seeing, I'm seeing enough evidence here that it was mailed proper about it, okay.
All right, just for the record, members, Jen Kendrick stepped out for this one, so Jake Morrison would say, would vote for her. Again, for the record, Mr., what's your name, sir?
Richard Smith.
Richard, you have to present the case, otherwise I can't sit on it for conflict with Mr. Bartolo.
I will, I will.
All right, the floor is yours.
Several years ago, I purchased thirty-nine Priscilla Ave and thirty-five Priscilla Ave on White Island Pond. Thirty-nine Priscilla Ave currently is still in existence and standing. When we realized how beautiful the area was and how wonderful it was, I'd also realized how many relatives I had, and we had no parking. So thirty-five Priscilla Ave had to disappear. We got permitted to have that razed. And now, the family seems to have found us down here, and everybody seems to like the area. And I know I look like I'm forty-five years old, but I am thinking about retiring, and I wanna live on White Island Pond. So that said, thirty-nine Priscilla Ave has to go. And if there's any questions, I could certainly have Brad could answer anything for you guys in regards to the specifics of it.
So thirty-five is gone?
Thirty-five is gone, we took that down probably five years ago. That was all permitted and all done, and basically, if you've, if you've been to that area, Priscilla Ave sort of ends, so there's zero parking down there. And again, large family, so thirty-five had to go. That came out and turned it into basically grassy parking area.
So you already took a residence.
Thirty-five has already been removed, yes.
All right, Brad.
Thank you, again, Brad Bartolo of J.C. Engineering. This project has gone before the Board of Health, I mean, the Conservation Commission, and after numerous changes, we did come up with a final footprint that they approved and were comfortable with. As you can see on the site plan, the existing footprint of the dwelling and deck is shown. It currently sits three-point-one feet from the rare property line. So following in nature with other dwellings in the neighborhood that have done similar things, similar tear-down and rebuilds, we felt it would be a benefit for the environment, and in conservation's eyes, to pull that setback away from the pond. In doing so, we're increasing the setback off of the rare property line from three-point-one feet, which is the current deck stairway, to fifteen-point-three feet. So a little more than twelve-foot separation, or an increase off the rare property line. What we're proposing is a single-family house. I just passed out a house plan. The homeowners have spent a lot of time on coming up with a footprint that they want, and the style of the house is in tune with the style of the existing house, although slightly larger to accommodate the family. Again, they had eliminated living space that was part of a second dwelling on this property, and that location was in the area where the current gravel driveway is, that's shown on plan, to get a concept of roughly where that was. In doing so, we are also proposing a footprint that is twenty feet from the side property line and twenty-point-three feet from the front property line. This property is approximately a hundred feet deep, and the current bylaw requires a one-hundred-foot zoning setback requirement, front zoning setback requirement. So this lot, whatever you do on this property, can't meet any front property line setbacks to allow them to rebuild on this property. Again, they're trying to beautify the location, update the structure. It's more cost-effective to tear down and rebuild as opposed to adding on. They are benefiting from an increased rare setback. And the style of the house is a single-floor ranch style from the front. With the grade, they do have rare access, so from the back, it looks like a two-story dwelling, that being the pond side. And the house itself, as you can see on the grading, sits considerably lower than the street. So the proposed, basically, ceiling height of this existing house, or proposed house, is about street grade at the, in front of the property. So it's not really any increase in size than what's there today, or increase in height. It is a moderate increase in the footprint of the house, but we think that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. It's still a single-family dwelling. This is on a, a lot that actually has four individual lots, which is greater than some, not all, but a lot of the properties in this area that only have two lots, and around six thousand square feet. This lot itself is about twelve thousand square feet. And basically, the homeowner turned this property from two single-family dwellings down to one single-family dwelling.
All right, very well. David, wanna brief us quick on it, on your. David, do you want to brief us quick on your decision? Just make it easy.
So basically, the property as it exists now, it's a little bit smaller than what they're proposing. The northern boundary of his lot, they currently have a twenty-three-and-a-half-foot side yard setback. They're proposing a sixteen-and-a-half-foot side yard setback. Their front lot line, they are going from thirty-six point eight to twenty-two eight on the Priscilla Ave side. Approves on the rear yard, and it is not an issue on the water side or on the left lot line. And it's already non-conforming to every aspect. They're just, they're just making it more non-conforming than what exists there.
But it's an extension for existing non-conforming, right? Kind of?
It's a special permit because they are intensifying existing non-conformities, not creating any new non-conformities.
All right.
Did we just approve one not too long ago of Priscilla?
Pretty close.
It was the direct abutment of this. Same situation. We turned it and pulled it away from the pond. So it got closer to the street, but, or the side propylines, but benefited the setback off of the pond.
All right. Charlie, do you want to say something quick? Do you have anything?
I was just going to ask a question about the existing gravel driveway. Is that going to maintain?
Probably, only because we need the parking.
I don't see, you've got a proposed paved driveway there after you do the septic system.
I think, I think what it was too is with conservation, they wanted impervious, they didn't want impervious material there or minimize it. So that gravel allows it to act the way the conservation wanted it to. And the last thing I want to do is mow grass.
Will, will you have any, any kind of facilities that bound the perimeter of the paved surface that will sort of attenuate the runoff that comes off that?
Currently, right now, the very front of this, on that front side, front side is all riprap. And it's been there, existing impact. So we don't really have any issue with it running off now.
Conservation didn't have an issue with it. There is an existing paved driveway.
I know.
It's kind of outlined in the black, black line on the plan.
Right, and it looks like it's going to be squared off from what I see. The green line, I'm assuming?
Green line, yep, the.
Goes over the top of the septic system, sort of expands the paved area a little bit down the slope.
It does. The paved line goes up to that curved retaining wall that kind of runs almost two feet off of the street. It runs just under the inlet side of the septic tank. So that's all pavement there. So there's, there's some decrease there. Conservation had no, no issue with it.
That curved retaining wall is, is coming out?
That would be, yeah. It would be removed and replaced with a new retaining wall that's showing.
Which is the straight one that you showed there.
Correct.
I don't have any real issues with it. The grading across the proposed pavement area, it runs about a, looks like it's maybe a foot and a half or two feet across it. So maybe around the perimeter, if, if there were some crushed stone that went around the perimeter of the paved area, it would attenuate any runoff that goes downhill from there. It's, it's a good slope, but that's the only issue I see with it.
I think, to be honest with you, I think what'll end up happening is once we get there, if, it's basically going to begin, going to be used for parking. So if it does rut or if it does cause an issue, yes, we're going to have to, we'll, we'll address that with crushed stone or some impervious material that would take care of that issue. I think the big, the big part of this is originally, there's a cesspool there for both, for, for the two houses. Well, we couldn't believe it when they were both just joined together. So this is just adding this septic system and, and creating what we've, what we've tried to create here is just a tremendous plus for the area, especially right on White Island Pond. Environmentally.
Charlie, anything else you want to? Wilma? Ken, you want to say something? Jake? I guess Jake is voting Jen on that side, no? Carl? Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor? Against? Here and none? Let's move to close.
All right, move to close the public hearing.
I have a second, by Carl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Great.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this plan and grant the special permit.
Second.
We'll make, we should make a, what?
Withstanding conditions, yes.
What's the conditions?
Standing conditions always apply.
Very well. And we should include also the J.C. Engineering plans dated on, when you modify that. What's the date on that?
What's the date on this plan?
February seventh.
February seventh, two thousand eighteen. And the architecture plan drafted by Cornerstone Design Building Services. There's no plans on it, but we just go by the name. So all in favor, I mean, do I have a second on that?
Ken, I think Carl's seconded it.
Second, Carl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Thank you. Wilma, you aye? Yes, so five zero zero. Thank you.
But you're out of state college. I'm the baseball coach there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, pass it.
We lost today against Carl.
It's already won tonight, so you know.
Jasmine, just. Jasmine, for the record, this one Jake voted, not Jen. So five zero zero, Jake, not Jen. Thank you.
Feed the file, feed the file. Okay, is that everything on the last one? Thank you.
All right. Eight dash eighteen, Bayshant Builders, seventeen Washburn Court.
I'm going to read this into the record, but before I do, I'm going to tell the board that I was involved with the transaction in recent history, so I will have to recuse myself on voting.
All right, Jake Morrison was sitting on that, on, on Mr. Akavachi's seats. So go ahead.
I don't have a whole bunch of copy. Am I going to give you too many? The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on April eleventh, two thousand eighteen, at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number eight dash eighteen for a variance from the requirements of Article six, Table six twenty-one of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Bayshant Builders, nine Tyler Avenue, East Wareham, Mass. zero-two-five-three-eight, seeking to resolve issues regarding a building constructed above the approved height located at seventeen Washburn Court, Wareham, Mass. That's on Assessors Map one thirty-four lots one oh seven four and one oh seven five in the M R thirty zoning district.
All right, name?
Bill Bayshant of Tyler Ave.
Okay, so just let us know what's the deed.
I'm asking for relief for the height restriction on a building that was constructed ten years ago.
How did you run to this one? What happened?
Well, it, it's been a menace to the neighborhood, and I figured I'd come along and fix it.
Oh, okay. Did you, did you ever read your, your deed?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Did you ever read your deed?
Did I read the deed?
It says one hundred thirteen thousand, but it says one hundred seven thousand. Nothing, it just.
It's two lots.
No, no, but the numbers, it's wrong, but it doesn't matter.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? Did you ever see, notice that?
I didn't notice that. I'm going to have to look at that.
Come look at it, it's funny. It is one hundred thirteen thousand, one oh seven.
Little ambiguity here.
My goodness, Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak on this case.
Yeah.
Seventeen Washburn Court was permitted years ago, a long time ago. It's changed hands several times.
What's years ago, like ten, twenty?
I don't have that paperwork in front of me, but I believe it's been eight to ten years.
Okay.
Yeah, ten years.
This property has changed hands multiple times. A lot of open violations on this property, a lot of failed inspections. It's been vacant for a long time. It, it is a newer structure, hasn't been lived in yet.
Changed hands doesn't help.
It's changed ownership a few times. I can't tell you exactly how many times, but different builders.
Give the board a little history if you'd like.
Yeah, just let him finish.
Different builders have purchased this property. They've attempted to complete it, and they've all failed. Mr. Bayshant has purchased this. He wants to complete it, get it on the market, to sell it, improve the neighborhood. It, it, it looks horrible, overgrown grass, old building materials on the property. It's just been a mess for a long time. Whoever built it initially, built it higher than what they proposed. It was supposed to be under thirty-five feet. Final measurements have calculated the building at roughly thirty-eight feet in height. So, so this is an after-the-fact retroactive variance so that Mr. Bayshant can continue to complete the house and transfer it to a new owner.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Just, just to help everybody out a little bit, what I know about the property. Two, three owners back, there was a building permit to build the structure that stands there. And at, at or about the time they began to build it, it was determined that the parcel is in the flood zone and therefore would have to conform that way as far as getting the bottom of the first floor joists out of the flood zone, et cetera. So in the infinite wisdom of the person that built it with his cash that came from unknown sources, he built the structure, he, he just made the foundation taller, but he put the same structure on it. So if he had put it on a conventional foundation, it would have been conforming. But when he made the foundation taller, he made the whole house three, four feet taller. And that's how he got in trouble on the height requirement. And then he got in trouble in other ways and ended up leaving legal counsel and sold the house for cash so he could pay his lawyer to keep his jail term as short as possible. And the next guy bought it and sat on it and paid taxes on it like it was a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house for a number of years. And all it is, is a rough frame and a roof and a bunch of broken windows. It was framed, the windows were put in, the doors were not. It was, the roof was shingled, and that's as far as it got. There's no plumbing, there's no wiring, there's nothing. And there it sits, and, and it is a bit of a blight on the neighborhood. Kids have gone in, they've tried to board it up a couple of times, they break the windows. So his, Mr. Bayshant took a gamble, hoping that maybe this board would grant him a variance. Otherwise, he's got to rip the roof off and change the whole structure of the house. He's already non-conforming in a couple of other areas. I believe the new zoning required him to have six-inch-thick walls instead of four-inch-thick walls. And I've heard all kinds of craziness. But the point of the matter is, is that there it sits, folks. I mean, it's, it's, it's a mess. When I say it's a mess, it's, it's unoccupied. It's in, it's in a, what do you call it, an attractive nuisance? So he just wants to finish it, make it habitable, etc.
Okay, very well. Wilma? What do you think? I mean, it's been there for ten years.
I was just looking at, I was looking at the deed and all that. And I have a zoning bylaw from two thousand eight. And I was just reading through. So I, I mean, I know that it would, it does need work. But I think, I think with the way for the height, he could lower the roof. I mean, I don't know that much about, but instead of it going.
I know, but it's.
Make a, not have an attic, maybe have a crawl space in there.
Well, it becomes, just, yeah, that, that become very unfeasible expenses. I mean, it'll defeat the purpose. I mean, the guy's buying junk house, junk, making it, trying to make it look nice. There in the whole roof, that, that he won't make any money, so it's not worth it. So I would like personally to encourage him to make it nice. It's been there for ten years. I mean, a couple of feet. I don't see, we'll ask if any neighbors here have a problem with it.
I mean, Mr. Bochon's been around for quite a while, and he, I'm surprised that he went ahead and, without looking a little bit farther into this.
Probably didn't notice until he bought it. Maybe he came along. Anyway, so we'll.
I mean, as I said, but, okay. That's all I got to say. That's my opinion.
To that comment, again, I'm not going to be voting. But I'm, I'm pretty sure Mr. Bayshant was aware of the, of the challenges and was willing to gamble on the town and try to improve it. Took, to the, you know, somebody's going to do something, it's going to sit there for another twenty years.
Right.
As, as an occupied structure. You tell them, oh, nope, you can't do it. Anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, let's go ahead. Jake? Jen?
I don't have any questions.
Carl?
I'm surprised it hasn't been burnt yet.
Like others?
Hopefully not.
Hopefully, I'll finish it.
All right, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor? Against? Here and none? Let's move to close it.
Jen, I'm recused, so.
Can you make a motion to close it? Jen, somebody?
I should have closed the public hearing.
Do I have a second? Second by Jake. All in favor to close, say aye. Aye. All in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Wilma?
No.
Not to close it, just to close the public hearing.
Huh?
Just to close the public hearing.
All right.
Aye, five zero zero. Okay. Any wishes?
Let us close it, Wilma, let us close it.
All right. Do you want to make a motion, somebody?
I make a motion to accept the application as presented.
All right, we have a motion.
With that property.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the variance as presented. Do I have a second? Second by Jake. Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed by Wilma, so it's four zero, four one zero. Okay, the carriage, thank you.
Thank you.
Next one.
Everybody want to turn their paperwork in so we can follow the way.
That was Washburn Court, right?
That was Washburn.
Where is Washburn Court? Okay, oh, that, Todd Barbosa, that. He's in jail? I know. Don't you think that is what I said? All right, nine eighteen, Anthony and Barbara Leon, it's thirteen seventh, Seventh Street.
The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on April eleventh, two thousand eighteen, at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number nine dash eighteen for a variance slash special permit from the requirements of Article six, Table six twenty-two, Article thirteen, Section thirteen thirty-three of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Anthony and Barbara Leon, fourteen Shepherd Road, Sagamore Beach, Mass. zero-two-five-six-two, seeking to construct a fourteen-foot-by-ten-foot-six-inch-square-foot kitchen addition located at thirteen Seventh Street, Onset, Mass. That's on Assessors Map one lot five-seven-five in the Onset Village Two zoning district.
All right, very well. Just like, just give me a second. Is everyone here is for that matter? You guys all for this matter? What are you, what are you guys here waiting for?
On the agenda.
Oh, Albatros Ave, okay.
Five Albatros.
All right. Okay, all right. Just your name, sir?
Chris Ellis, 25 George Street, Plymouth.
All right, you wanna tell us what you're trying to?
Yeah, I'm here on behalf of Anthony and Barbara Leon to ask for a special permit to build a 10-by-14 extension to their kitchen. The reason for the special permit is because we were already pre-existing, non-conforming. We were over the lot coverage, and we're asking to cover a little bit more of that lot.
Okay. And is this... Okay, same thing. David, you wanna brief us quick, make it easier for us?
He actually just nailed it right on the head. So, the addition...
Speak up.
I apologize, I didn't turn it on. The new addition does meet all of the setback requirements. It's just that the existing building is already non-conforming in regards to site coverage, and adding on to the building is just going to increase the non-conforming nature, because you're gonna increase, increase the lot coverage. That's really the only... He's increasing the non-conformity from 21% to 25%, where 20% is allowed.
Okay, but it's existing non-conforming, right?
It's already non-conforming, so it would be a special permit.
All right. Wilma? Any questions, Wilma?
No, I have no questions, now that I see the measurements.
This 17th Street, this is an answer, so...
Everything is shoe-worn in there.
Is it safe to say, is it safe to say that almost everything in the neighborhood is in violation of the lot coverage? Okay.
You can go to the window and get ketchup from your neighbor if you want, yeah.
Okay, that's about my only question.
Jack? Jake, sorry. Jen?
I do not have any questions.
Carl? Carl?
I have nothing.
Nothing. Anyone in the audience in favor? Against?
I'm not, I'm not really against it, I just have a question.
Just come forward.
Good evening again, Dominic Camerano, Onset. We have the houses right, right behind, where they're building, great neighbors, good people and everything. Probably five or six owners before them put up a stockade fence, and it's kinda like dilapidated, falling down. I don't even know if they know, I mean, the good side of the fence is actually facing their house, so it almost looks like it's our fence, but it's not. About six owners before, that's a big shepherd's, and they cut it off. I just wanna know if the board would ask them if they could replace that fence. It's not, it's, gee, 'cause it's not that big. It might be four or five sections, but it's actually fallen down, and you know where they are building on, it would be nice to, if they would repair it. I don't know if you can make them or ask them, I'm just...
You hear his concern.
It's not that big of a deal, but I'm not really against it. Like I said, they're good people.
On behalf of the Leonis, how do we know that it's their fence? If it was put in six owners prior...
I'm telling you, I live there all my life, like that. I don't, I don't have a problem, you know, with where it is or whatever. Like I said, it's, it's ready to fall down, and, you know, where you're asking to build more there, I would just soon have the privacy, that's all.
All right. One other time, just, are you done, Dominic?
Yes, I'm done.
All right.
That was my question.
I wanted to ask Dominic a question. So, you're, this is map, map 1, lot 757, and you're...
We're on 8th Street, right behind them.
Yeah, I see, I see you show it. So, you're, when I, when I look at this plan, you're directly behind them.
Three houses, yeah, all three houses behind them, yes.
You have three houses behind them?
Yeah. But I don't know if, like, all, I think the lot line's only maybe two.
If I hold this up, can you see it from there? How's your eyesight?
I'll come down.
Okay. Okay, so this is the parcel that we're talking about?
Yes.
And this is you here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's a fence that goes from here to here?
Yep.
Okay.
This house goes, 168th Street's mine, that's my mother's, it's actually...
But what, you're talking...
And I'm right here, 22 West Boulevard, 168th and 128th, these three are our houses.
Okay.
This is the backyard.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so my question to you, Mr. Camerano?
Yes, sir.
Is, I see you want a new fence.
Well, I just...
Would you be willing to pay for it if they put it up?
No. It's not my fence, it's not my fence.
You answered my question.
Okay, okay. Like I said, it's not mine. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, it'd be nice if you changed it, but I can't make it.
I'll bring it up to them, I can't say yeah.
Ask them.
I can't spend their money.
Exactly.
I left you one, and they didn't answer me.
That's okay. Just ask them if they could change it.
I will definitely do that.
Who else, who else wanna say anything? Anything else?
No, no, thank you, thank you, meantime.
The board, anything else? Okay, we hear none, let's close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second to close?
Second.
Second by Jen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, has closed. Wishes?
Motion to grant.
We have a motion to grant.
Standard conditions.
We have a motion by Jim to grant the standard conditions. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Carl, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Yes, so 5-0-0 passes, thank you.
Two tonight. You got two.
All right, this is...
Three?
Thank you for coming in.
Wilma's getting soft.
All right.
Should I say?
Oh, yeah.
We have...
Oh, you were waiting, huh? We have one more?
Did we continue? Yes. Ramos really comprehensive permit, we hope Peter Freeman's okay? We don't know. Have you heard? Anybody heard?
No. You don't hear much out of Toby until...
You didn't hear it, David?
The coroner makes an announcement, or the guy is released.
That's too bad. All right. All right, certificate of completion for Mike Harrington, Square Island.
We got them all.
Is it here? Okay.
I think it might have...
Is that Zero Square Island, is that the solar panel?
That's the solar panel, that's correct.
So, they need a certificate of completion, or did I, did I comply with everything Charlie wanted?
I haven't seen it since the, we had a discussion with him.
All right, we'll continue this until next time. So, for Jasmine for the 25th, request for minor modification, Albatros Ave, James Caporicio.
Now, we have, this is a minor modification, so there was a...
That's, that's done.
Okay.
Yep, and so...
I'm sorry you guys had to wait that late. Usually it's not like this, but it would have been a lot longer if it was that unfortunate accident for the lawyer for one of the hearings. We'll be here until 12, that's horrible, I know. Hopefully, he'll be okay. All right.
This has already been read in, so this is a minor modification, we don't need to read this, do we?
No.
All right. All right, name and address for the record, and please tell us what you're doing.
I'm Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects, with my clients Faith and Jim Caporicio. Talking about property at Five Albatros Ave in Wherem Lake Shore's Drive neighborhood. We were here in the fall and received a special permit to construct a property, construct a structure. Apparently, we got a little bit out over our skis, because we then found that the conservation was going to reduce the area that we thought we were gonna be able to build in. So, we've had to redesign the house to accommodate the new available lot area. While it is a major change to the structure itself, we considered a minor modification to the site and the action of this board. I don't know if you have...
Just let him finish, go ahead.
Let me ask you a couple of quick questions.
Certainly.
When this was approved, there were setbacks.
Yes.
All right, are the setbacks greater or lesser conforming, under the new proposal?
They would be greater.
Greater conforming? They're gonna conform more than they did when it was approved? That's what conservation did to you. Okay. This is a little bit bigger, we can see it better.
If this is an existing house in the pre...
In gray?
In gray. Then now, same gray here.
Right.
So, we're going to be sitting pretty much on the same footprint as existing house.
So, they didn't give you that?
Yeah, they, what happened is we wound up with this wetland, which was, our botanist told us was not a state wetland, but...
Wareham.
Wareham bylaw kicked in, it's technically a town wetland, we got a 30-foot setback, so we constrained our...
So, you lost this and that?
We lost that area, so we had to rebuild the structure somewhat. So, we are now going, proposing to go to the current building line.
Yeah.
Whereas we were proposing to pull it back a couple of feet.
Okay.
And in the front, we're doing about the same.
Right.
What about the height? You changing the height?
We are changing the height.
You adding a story because of what you are...
We are adding, actually, a half a story. We need about a story and a half structure.
Instead of sprawling, you know...
We're gonna have to go...
You just don't need an elevator.
We need a two-story structure on this side, as we're gonna have on this side.
I got you.
The attached garage is now on the garage.
Okay.
So, it's basically a structure about the same size.
Okay.
I got it.
David, you answer some quick?
I don't have anything.
Charlie?
Just a question for Bill. Have you received the waivers from the Board of Health for the separation distance from the lot line to the leaching area for the septic system?
My understanding is that J.C. Engineering has been through the Board of Health and received all necessary variances.
Based on this current plan.
That's the only issue that I had.
The bonuses for bedrooms, you mean?
As long as it doesn't have to go to DEP for the, for the variance, that's fine. If the Board of Health has done it, it's fine.
For what? For bonus, for bed?
For the septic system.
The septic system setback to the street line, it's right on the street line.
Yeah.
It requires a tentative setback.
Right, you got a variance for that?
Because it was an existing system, I believe is why the variance was granted.
I understand, but typically, they do need the waivers, you just can't do it without the waiver.
Right.
If they've got it, fine.
I don't think they could get a building permit without a sign-off, right?
Right.
So, let's kinda get to that. All right, Wilma?
Nothing.
Okay, Jim? Can you wanna say anything?
No.
Jake? Jen? Carl? So...
Do we ask for a public?
Yeah, anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor or against?
In favor.
Okay.
Mr. Scott, Three Albatros Ave.
Okay.
Mr. Scott from Albat, number Three Albatros Ave.
Is in favor.
Raises his hand in favor, thank you.
All right, very well. So, let's move to close this public...
I move to close the public hearing?
No public hearing.
Oh, actually, it's, it's not, just modifications, sorry.
Nothing to close.
All right, so how's the...
Make a motion to grant the modification.
All right, we have, we have a motion to grant the minor modification by Jim, based on new plans from J.C. Engineering, signed, and on March 7, 2018. Do I have a second for that?
Anybody wanna second it?
Second.
Second by Carl, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.